Okay, it's official by my clock anyway. So I'm going to call to order the regular Emeryville Planning Commission meeting of the February 25th, 2021. The time is exactly 6:30. I'm going to read the COVID script. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting has been being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided by provided for under the government's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During this public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed on ETV Channel 27 and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main city of Emeryville website at www.Emeryville.org and then navigating to the Planning Commission page. Once there, you will see the link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda, and there's a link on the Planning Commission Agenda page as well. So Charlie, can we have a roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner Chafee.
Here.
Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Commissioner Mendez.
Here.
Vice Chair Young. Vice Chair Young. And Chair Thompson.
Here.
Here.
So we have two vacancies on the commission as you know, and all five current commissioners are present.
Okay, great. Thanks. I think next on the agenda is the recognition of outgoing commissioners, Deepak Sahani and Miguel Guerrero.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. Commissioners, former Commissioner Sahani has advised that he will not be able to attend tonight's meeting, so I have agreed, we have agreed to continue his resolution to your March 25th meeting, so we will only be doing Commissioner Guerrero's, and there he is. So with your permission, Chair Thompson, I will go ahead and read what has been prepared.
Please go ahead. Thanks.
And what I'm gonna do is share my screen so that everybody can read it along with me. All right, can you all see that? You know, it's okay. Are you ready? Here we go. Resolution CPC number DMG 21-01, Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Emeryville, expressing the commission's sincere appreciation to Douglas Miguel Guerrero for three and a half years of service on the Emeryville Planning Commission. Whereas, on June 20th, 2017, the City Council appointed Douglas Miguel Guerrero to the Emeryville Planning Commission for a three-year term from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2020. And whereas, the commission reappointed Miguel for a second three-year term beginning on July 1st, 2020. And whereas Miguel has resigned from the commission because as a casualty of the regional housing crisis, he has had to vacate his Emeryville apartment and relocate to beautiful Portland, Oregon, a planner's paradise, making him ineligible to continue to serve on the commission. And whereas Miguel served as Vice Chair of the Planning Commission from August 2018 to June 2019, and as Chair of the Commission from July 2019 to June 2020. And whereas during Miguel's term on the commission, a number of major development projects were approved by the commission, including two cannabis dispensaries and several cannabis manufacturing facilities, the final development plans for the buildings, open space, and public park in the Sherwin-Williams mixed-use project, the Emeryville Center for the Arts, the Adeline Springs Residential Project, and the Marketplace Parcel B Research and Development Lab Building. And study sessions were held on the 5850 Shellmount Residential Project, the San Pablo Affordable Apartments, Emeryville's first SB 35 project, the Biomed Emeryville Center of Innovation, and the massive Ani mixed-use project, which was later abandoned. And Miguel played an active role in the deliberations on these and many other projects. And whereas during Miguel's term on the commission, a number of long-range planning efforts were reviewed and/or recommended for approval by the adopted by City Council, including local mitigation plan update 2017, 2022, consideration of amendments to the noise ordinance, 40th and San Pablo Bus Hub, and redesign of 40th Street, parking management plan, consideration of planning regulations on unit mix and design and tower separation, review of the city's capital improvement program, elimination of minimum parking requirements, bird-safe building standards, best-re-dwelling unit regulations, pedestrian and bicycle blind scope of work, and cannabis regulation amendments. And Miguel played an active role in the deliberations on all of those efforts. And whereas Miguel always advocated for Emeryville as a livable community with a focus on biking and walking as a way of life, and whereas Miguel has displayed strong leadership in keeping the commission focused and making progress in an evolving community, and whereas Miguel's passion and energy was contagious, he took a holistic view in reviewing issues and provided feedback that was in the best interests of improving the quality of life for Emeryville. We also appreciated his leadership as Chair. And whereas Miguel's neighbors will miss the opportunity to have future community gatherings at Christie Park, and whereas we will miss Miguel's attentions for alternative living, and whereas Miguel's Emeryville contributions to design criteria will be part of his tools that he brings to his new home. And whereas Miguel's need to leave the area for reasons related to the regional housing shortage underscores the importance of sustainable, equitable future development in Emeryville. And whereas Miguel's deep appreciation for the city of Emeryville and insight into transportation parks and general planning processes will be greatly missed. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission hereby expresses its sincere appreciation to Douglas Miguel Guerrero for his three and a half years of outstanding service to the city of Emeryville and its citizens, and wishes him the best of luck in all of his future endeavors, and that he continues to keep his interest in planning. Approved by the Planning Commission of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held on Thursday, February 25th, 2021. And here are the commissioners and staff's signatures. And I failed to mention at the beginning that, as always, this was a collective effort. And those wherewithal contributed, Miguel, by your colleagues, including Deepak, who contributed a couple himself. So there you are. Congratulations.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, the virtual clapping.
I appreciate everything that you all said here. And it captures the time that I span the commission well. You know, 2020 was a year of challenge, like a challenging year for everybody. And at the end of the year, I got thrown a big challenge myself where I had to find housing by myself. And you know, like I quickly learned that that wasn't really realistic for me and you know, it made me kind of sad that, you know, as invested as I was in Emeryville and how much I love living there, that even with like a relatively good-paying job, that I couldn't live in the city that I love by myself. And, and you know, COVID has its own challenges with having to work remotely. And so that flexibility allowed me to explore some options that I typically wouldn't ever, you know. And so, you know, I'm enjoying my time here in Portland. I was in Emeryville over the weekend and really miss it, especially the weather. And, and so really jealous of all of a sudden you all get there. I'll make my way back to Emeryville periodically and really look forward just to like enjoying the city just as I did when I lived there. The parks are really something that's great and biking along the waterfront, along the greenway. There's so many things to love about Emeryville, you know, and, and it's unfortunate that, you know, that, that people aren't able to, to live and enjoy those, those places like, like myself because of affordability challenges. So just want to underscore that that's really a big challenge for our, for our city, or for your city now because I don't live there. But, you know, in the seven years that I lived in Emeryville, I saw revolving door of community members in my complex. And I think that's a big challenge for getting people really connected to what's happening with all the work that you're doing. And so hopefully this is something that, that can be addressed at some point. I'm still around and so maybe someday I might make it back to Emeryville as a resident. But for now, I will do all I can to learn from, from Portland and all the great things that they're doing here and bring them back to whatever work I do in the planning field once I get back into that realm. So I appreciate all, like working with all of you. It's really been a pleasure. And, you know, like this isn't the end. It's just a new challenge for this year. And I'm looking forward to like, to what 2021 brings for, for myself and then also for the city of Emeryville too.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone else would like to speak at this time. Maybe you can raise your hand and just take a moment. Yeah, Stephen, Commissioner Keller.
And just to wish Miguel all the best and great success up there. You landed in a good city. You know, there's a lot to learn there and maybe why are there you can get involved. But I really hope you do find your way back here someday. You did, you did have a love for this city and it's unfortunate you had to go, but come back as soon as you can.
Thank you, Stephen.
Anyone else? Well, Commissioner Mendez, actually.
So.
Let's do Mendez first and then go to Commissioner Young.
Yeah, I'll be quick. I mean, I, I'm just so glad that I got to meet you and serve with you on this planning commission. I do hope that we stay in contact, you know, maybe have some tips for each other. You living in Portland, us here in Emeryville, it would be, be great to continue this relationship. So looking forward to that and to hear what you have to share with us.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendez.
Yeah. Hey Miguel, so Portland is one of my favorite cities in the entire world. I just, I love that place. It's, it's beautiful. There's, there's water, there's bridges, there's mountains nearby. And, you know, make yourself out to the coast as a wonderful byways that take you from Portland all the way out to the coast and takes you up and down to Coos Bay and turns around, come back. It's absolutely idyllic. You, so take advantage of it. If you, I know you do a lot of bikes and stuff, but you could get into rock climbing. There's some wonderful, there's some wonderful bouldering and rock climbing out there and it's, it is, it is really a wonderful paradise. You're not, I think you're taking a huge upgrade. You're just not telling any of us.
Commissioner Chafee. Commissioner Young. You'll be surprised to know that I have a car now and the rain is keeping me off my bike a lot.
I see a lot of guys riding out in the rain. I don't
I know.
I understand it, but I do see them. All right.
Commissioner Chafee. Thanks. I just wanted to say that I'm so glad as well that I overlapped with you for a short period on this commission and I always really valued your, your inputs and your thoughts and creativity and positivity. So best of luck.
Thank you, Commissioner Chafee.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Miguel. Yeah, I think I just want to echo everyone's comments. Thank you again for your service. Thank you for your leadership. And then, and also for really the commitment to Emeryville. Good luck with your next, your next endeavors. And yeah, and definitely, we should definitely keep in contact.
I appreciate that, Chair Thompson. My, my email address, I'm hanging on to it. So it won't change and that's the best way to get in touch with me and I'm happy to show anybody around as they visit Portland on bike, walking, on transit, however you want to get around. I'll show you around when you're here visiting.
Great, thank you.
If I may, on behalf of staff, I just want to say what a pleasure it was to work with you for your time on the commissioner, on the commission, Commissioner Guerrero. And also the resolution I just read, I will be framing it and sending it off to you. Unfortunately, since you're so far away, I wasn't able to deliver it to you prior to tonight's meeting. But you will be receiving it in the next week or so.
Thank you, Charlie. It's been really nice working with you all with the city and I learned a lot along my time working with you all. It's been three and a half years here on the commission, but the whole time that I've lived in Emeryville, I've had a chance to work with the city staff through other committees and always really respect the work that you guys do and, and think you do an awesome job.
Thank you.
All right, fantastic. Well, so we're gonna move on to the part B of the public comment. Or I should say part B of the COVID script and then followed by the public comment. Now is the time for public comment portion of this meeting. Now, anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda should have begun to middle of your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please raise, use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, press *9 and the clerk will call you at the appropriate time. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments. And again, this is for comments that are not, for items that are not on the agenda, and the time limit is three minutes.
We did get about four online speaker cards, but they were all on the Biomed item. I don't see any additional speaker cards. However, I do see one raised hand, Henry Simons. So with your permission, I will allow him to speak.
Yeah, please, please go ahead.
All right, Mr. Oh. There you go. All right, Mr. Simons.
Hey, everybody. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Hi, everybody. My name's Henry Simons. I live in Emeryville, obviously at 1500 Park Avenue. I've been on the Housing Commission for the last four years and I'm listening in tonight because I'm planning on applying to join the Planning Commission. So it's so great to hear all about all the great work you're doing and I'm hoping to get to know many of you better in the future. Thanks so much.
So Charlie, you're on mute.
Yes, I see. Thank you. I don't see any other raised hands. Let me just check my email real quickly. I have no further online speaker cards.
Okay, fantastic. Hearing no additional requests to make comments. The public comment portion of this meeting is now closed. You'll have an opportunity to address and speak on matters that are listed on the agenda when that agenda item comes up. So next on the agenda is the approval of the action minutes of January 28th, 2021. Are there any comments on those? Does someone want to move to approve?
I'll go ahead and approve their minute. It's for the 2021.
One second.
Minutes. All right, Commissioner Chafee.
Hi.
Commissioner Keller.
Hi.
Commissioner Mendez.
Hi.
Vice Chair Young.
Hi.
Hi. And Chair Thompson.
Hi.
Five eyes, the minutes are approved.
Great. So next on the agenda is the community directors, sorry, the community development director's report. Charlie?
Thank you. I'll keep it short tonight. I know we have a long meeting ahead of us. This is just on recent City Council actions. The councils had two meetings since your last meeting on February 7th and February 16th, and there was only one planning-related item on each of those agendas. So on February 2nd, the council considered the first reading of a proposed ordinance to make, to modify the provisions for renewal of operating permits for cannabis businesses. The council directed staff to make revisions to the proposed ordinance and to bring it back for another first reading at a future meeting. And on February 16th, the council approved execution of a sublease with Amtrak for the bus bays located in the podium of the Emery Station West Transit Center project at 5959 Horton Street. This culminates several years of negotiations and we understand that the Amtrak buses should begin to use the bus bays by the end of March. So that's good news. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Okay, hearing, hearing no questions. The, this is the part where we disclose ex parte communications and the identification of conflicts of interest. Are there any to declare at this time? Commissioner Keller?
I would like to declare that I go ahead.
Yeah, I had a couple of meetings with Ethan Walsh from Biomed Realty on the project on tonight's agenda.
Okay, Commissioner Young?
I as well, same thing, one, one meeting anyway.
Commissioner Mendez?
I will have to recuse myself from item number 9.2. That's the BMR discussion. The client is a source of income for myself and therefore I wouldn't be able to participate. They are a client to my employer.
Okay, and then you'll just, we'll identify it at the agenda item and you're accused. Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chafee?
I also met with Ethan Walsh and Celia Palio-Palili from BMR.
Okay, and then I also met with, with the BMR development team as well. Okay, we have, next on the agenda, an administrative item about the general plan annual progress report.
And Associate Planner Noobar Oaks will be making that presentation. We also have Housing Coordinator Laurie Bernardo with us tonight, who prepared the housing element portion of that report, and she's available also to answer questions.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Commission. As Charlie said, I'll be presenting on the 2020 General Plan Annual Progress Report, which contains an update for the general plan, the housing element, and the housing successor report. This year, there were no amendments to the general plan for development decisions. I'm pretty sure you're all pretty aware that the San Pablo Affordable Apartments, those were approved. The Art Center was also approved and the 47th Street Homes was recommended by Planning Commission and approved by City Council. So the general plan has 79 actions and 16 of those have already been completed. And progress was made on 59 of those this year. And in the next few slides, we'll be going over what some of those highlights of progress are. There were no progress made on four, so that would be for locating a new police facility, developing new sign regulations, environmentally preferable purchasing, and expanding transit service hours. Because of the pandemic, expanded transit service hours was not feasible this year. So what are those actions that were taken for the general plan this year? For land use, planning regulations were amended, streamlined the ADU process, allowing cannabis manufacturing in the new war zone, and eliminating parking minimums. There was a city loan for the San Pablo Affordable Apartments project and business outreach this year focused on COVID-19. So both resources for businesses, how they could survive during these times, and also making them aware of what regulations they needed to comply with. For transportation, parking meter zones were established and rollout of that began. Min block crossing was installed on San Pablo Avenue, south of 40th Street. And Palace Street pedestrian bicycle safety study was completed. Doyle Street, Doyle Street was closed to motor vehicle traffic, and we'll be hearing a little bit more about that later. And civil engineering design was completed for the railroad crossing improvements for 65th and 67th, added to the quiet zones. Or Parks Public, I'm trying to try that again. So Parks Public Facilities and Services, the Art Center, again, that was approved. So encroachment permits were also issued for utilities and telecommunications. That's handled by Public Works. And the Community Service Department had to adapt to COVID-19 by switching services into online or remote formats. So, oh, are you all still there? Did I lose connection?
Yeah.
Still here.
Okay, good. So for community services, they all senior program, they did drive-in movies this year instead of movies in the park or swim-in movies. And there was a drive-through Halloween parade for the kids for ECDC and the tree lighting ceremony was online instead of in person. Urban design, there is adaptive reuse of the existing Sherwin-Williams building, which included the pedestrian bicycle pass-through being approved. Art Center was approved and San Pablo Affordable Apartment, based on community feedback and the Planning Commission feedback gateway elements that are required by the general plan that were suggested by you were included in that design. New streetcap, streetscape projects have also been added to the CIP. So the Doyle Street closures resulted in a Village Greens plan. There's green infrastructure for stormwater treatment and streetlight surveys and standards have been added to the CIP. For conservation, safety, and noise, the Art Center is a reuse of a significant building, so that's part of conservation. For safety, there were pandemic protocols for COVID-19 that needed to be established. And for noise, the 65th and 67th Streets redesigned were part of the quiet zone scope of work and Union Pacific has agreed to agree to work on those. For sustainability, the city is seeking construction funding for bay-friendly landscaping at City Hall to be done. And electric vehicle chargers were installed for the parking enforcement vehicles for the parking meter rollout. The Housing Element Annual Progress Report includes a status update of where housing-related projects are, if they've been applied for, entitled, permitted, or completed, and highlights major project completions. There is the RENA, the Regional Housing Need Allocation Progress, and implementation of housing element programs that are all covered in this. This is required annually to be reported to the state. So for housing development applications, in 2020, there were five applications for eight ADUs. There is one additional unit to an existing home application and 90 units for a San Pablo Affordable Apartment. So those were all applied for in the past year. So combined, well, they're all from the San Pablo Affordable Apartments project. There's 51 very low-income units and 38 low-income for a total of 89 new affordable units that have been approved. So for entitlements, the San Pablo Affordable Apartments also were entitled last year. Four of those ADUs were approved. And the 47th Street Homes project, which was applied for well before 2020, was approved this year. And that's to demolish four existing buildings and replace them with six units. And the Bridge Court Apartments had a minor designer view application to add two new units into existing floor area that was being, that was underutilized. For building permits, there were five building permits issued for 502 units. 500 of those units were for Sherwin-Williams. And two units were those Bridge Court Apartment units. I think it's important to note that there were no building permits issued in 2019, but what that clearly shows is that, not that there wasn't work being done on it, but that it takes a while for that full review process to happen and that really all came into fruition in 2020. For occupancy projects, 165 total units received occupancy this year. So two of those were from Marketplace Buildings and one ADU unit. And the combined affordability of those units were 20 very low-income units, 30 low-income units, and 35 moderate-income units. And this is just a snapshot of what I just spoke about in narrative, showing the applications submitted over the past year. And entitlements completed over the past year. And the building permits issued, here you can see the breakdown of the four different Sherwin-Williams buildings. Four, three of those buildings had over 100 units and one of those buildings had about 60, 50 units per unit. And then the certificates of occupancy breakdown for almost 100 at Marketplace Parcel D and 66 for Parcel C2. So what does this mean for our regional housing needs allocation for RENA? If you look at the rightmost column there, you'll see where we are at in percent to goal, which is kind of a useful snapshot to look at. So we're 39% of the way towards our goal for very low-income housing, 23% of the way for our low and moderate-income housing. And we've already achieved our goal for market rate housing. In total, we're 79% of the way there and we're 69% of the way through the RENA period. So we're a little bit ahead in percentage-wise. So implementation of the housing element, there is 54 programs in the housing element and progress was made on 53 of those this year. The only area there wasn't progress made on was in educating HOAs to keep at least half of their units in ownership to stay eligible for FHA. Technical assistance was provided to HOAs in 2020 and staff is still working to develop a program during 2021. So program, program implementation highlights for the housing element are Affordable Housing Administration and Expenditure Plan was drafted in 2020 and that's anticipated to be adopted shortly. Over $120,000 in Affordable Housing impact fees were collected. And we received and approved our first SB 35 project. So that's the San Pablo Affordable Apartments. Nine units of affordable housing. Outreach techniques were adjusted in response to COVID-19. A lot of times, services are provided in person at City Hall. That wasn't possible this year. So a lot of those outreach techniques had to go online through other measures. A temporary shelter opened at 4300 San Pablo Avenue and the city also had a nonprofit development agreement there for, for the 4300 San Pablo Avenue for 100% affordable housing. So that's the same site as the temporary shelter. And this is just a map tracking that activity that we provide every year, updating the status of all the active sites. And this map updates each year what has, what projects have gone on since the adoption of the housing element. So everything highlighted in yellow are projects that are either So everything highlighted in yellow are projects that are either completed or under construction and the remaining ones are either approved. And in this case, there's two that are struck out. One is Ane, that project was withdrawn and another is a duplex conversion project on 55th Street. That project was approved but expired. So there's a housing successor annual report and that's the activities within low and moderate income housing asset fund. So this is just an update of those numbers for this year. And then the remaining properties that are part of that, the 3,600 San Pablo Avenue one was entitled as we've discussed and then the Christie Avenue properties are still in pre-development. So development activity must be initiated in all the remaining properties by September 1st. So it's required as part of the successor report to demonstrate that senior housing project, pardon me, senior housing production is less than 50% of total housing units, which is correct for Emeryville, that at least 30% of extremely low income expenditures are for that. And yes, that's correct and there are 158 homeownership loans within the portfolios. So that is the conclusion of the report. Both Valerie Bernardo and myself are available for any questions you may have and we're hoping for your recommendation for council this evening so that that can, this report can be forwarded to the state. Thank you.
Thank you Navar.
If I may clarify, Chair Thompson, that we don't, we have not prepared a resolution for you. We typically don't do that for this, for the annual general plan report. We're simply asking for a motion from the commission with any comments you may have.
So is there anyone who'd like to make a motion?
Sorry, you should take public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, this, okay, so this is, although this is listed under administrative item, I will read the public comment script. Now is the time for public comment on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have begun submittal on the online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed to the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen or if you're calling in, press star nine and the clerk will call you at the appropriate time. At this time, are there any comments received via online comment card or raised hands?
I do not see any online speaker cards and look through the list of attendees. We have 29 attendees and none of them are raising their hand to speak on this item.
Okay, well, I'm hearing no additional requests to make comments. Public comment portion of this item is now closed.
I'd like to make a motion for approval.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Commissioner Keller, second by Commissioner Mendez. Commissioner Chafe.
Hi.
Commissioner Keller.
Hi.
Commissioner Mendez.
Hi.
Vice Chair Young.
Hi.
Chair Thompson.
Hi.
Five eyes, the motion is approved and we will forward this to the city council. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the public hearings portion of this meeting, specifically the Sherwin-Williams building adaptive reuse.
So this is my item this month. I'll keep this brief. As I'm sure the commission recalls that your December 10th meeting, the commission conducted a hearing and unanimously approved the Sherwin-Williams Building 131 Adaptive Reuse Project. And here I am. Staff subsequently discovered that due to a procedural defect resulting from a miscommunication with our mail house vendor, not all legally required notices for the December 10th planning commission hearing were mailed. So in order to remedy this procedural defect, we've scheduled this item for a rehearing and a reapproval at your meeting tonight and we have issued the required notice for tonight's meeting. Given that there are no changes to the project, we approved it unanimously on December 10th and the commission received a full presentation from staff and the applicant at the December 10th meeting. We recommend that you waive presentation tonight. Of course, we and the applicant are here to respond to any questions you may have and that you then open the public hearing and take public testimony, close the public hearing and then adopt resolution number FDP 20-001A, subject to the conditions of approval that are attached to it. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Yeah, thanks Shirley. Are there any commissioner questions at this time? Okay, seeing no questions, I'm going to do a public comment for this item. Now it is the time for public comment. Oh, well, sorry, it's public hearing on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have begun submittal of your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen or if you're calling in, press star nine and the clerk will call on you at the appropriate time. At this time, are there any comments that have been received by online comment card or raised their hands to make audio comments?
I have no online speaker cards on this item and I do not see any raised hands among the attendees of the meeting.
Okay, well, at this time then, hearing no additional requests to make comment, the public hearing portion of this item is now closed. All right, thank you. We'll go on to, do we have to make a motion?
Yes, definitely. Motion and a second and a vote.
Sorry.
I will make the motion for approval.
I'll second that.
All right, and that was motion by Commissioner Keller and the second by Commissioner Chafe. We have Commissioner Chafe.
Hi.
Commissioner Keller.
Hi.
Commissioner Mendez.
Hi.
Vice Chair Young.
Hi.
And Chair Thompson.
Hi.
Five eyes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Okay, now we'll go on to the next agenda item. So the BMR Emeryville Center of Innovation, this is a public hearing and so I wanted to see if the applicant has a presentation. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Mendez.
Yep, I am going to have to recuse myself from this item, so I will be leaving the Zoom meeting.
Yeah, thank you for that.
All right, Commissioner Mendez, you have to restate your conflict now.
Sorry, it's, the client is a, the applicant, BMR, is a client of my employer, so therefore they're a source of income to me and that's where the conflict is.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Mendez.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on with this agenda item, the BMR Emeryville Center of Innovation.
And first have a presentation with staff and then by the applicant. So Mira Desai will handle the staff presentation.
Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm going to now share my screen. And just to check to see that you can see, see my screen? Yes, no?
Yes.
Yes, we can see your screen.
Okay, thank you. All right. So this is the overall of my presentation. I'm going to begin with the project overview, followed by a brief project description. In order to save time, I will not be repeating things regarding design, landscaping, open spaces and the changes that have been made since this item was, came in front of you. These will be done by the applicant. So I will be briefly going over the project description. After that, I'll be talking about parking, followed by bicycle infrastructure improvements, trees and the findings that the commission needs to, need to make in order to consider this project and approve it, environmental review and some additional conditions of approval that staff will be forwarding for your review. So this, as was mentioned, is a final consideration of the final development plan, which is an implementation of the Chiron PUD PDP, which was approved back in August of 1995. The commission reviewed this proposal at their first study session on December of 2019. That was followed by second study session in April of last year. The project was reviewed by the BPAC Committee on August 3rd and then that was followed by the third planning commission study session. Parks and Recreation Committee reviewed the project in September and there was a community meeting via Zoom in October. And now we are here to consider the project for approval. So this is essentially the current Chiron campus, the Chiron PUD PDP area and it is overlaid with the existing conditions. This is the Chiron PUD PDP buildout. In terms of this buildout, there are three things that have been built. One is the Hollis Green, the park, the existing building B4 and the existing garage along Horton. This PUD PDP buildout calls for 14 new buildings with seven labs, three office towers and structures supporting parking and facilities over the course of 30 years. These are the existing conditions and the campus is divided among the Griffles and the BMR. What you're seeing is the BMR owned properties. And in terms of the final development plan, FTP proposal that has been considered today, this is the scope of the site plan. This is the existing, we have Hollis at the bottom and we have Horton on the top. This is the existing Hollis Green and this is the existing building four. So what they are posing are four R and D buildings and a parking structure on Horton to support this. As you can see, there are several plaza and open areas between the two buildings as well as next to the Horton Landing Park. In addition, Chiron Way will be opened up to traffic and will be opened up for both traffic pedestrians and bicycles. These are the basic details of various buildings in terms of their height and approximate maximum size. These have not changed from the last time that the planning commission reviewed this proposal back in August. So the total R and D space is 911,800 square feet. This kind of gives you the building massing of the proposed buildings. And these are the building B1 elevation. So this is the building at the corner of Hollis and Stanford. This building has not changed since the last time you saw this. This building B2, three elevations and this is the second building along Hollis. And this has changed since the last time you saw this. The applicant will be going over the changes, but to give you what it looked like before, this is what you saw the last time and this is what they're proposing now. This gives you the renderings of the two buildings along Hollis Street, taken from Hollis Street and Stanford Avenue. And then the next two set of buildings are building B8 and B8B and these are along 53rd Street. Again, this building has not changed since you last saw it in August. And this is building B8B elevations as well and this has also not changed. These are the renderings that you saw last time and as I mentioned, these buildings are not, have not been modified, so these renderings should be familiar to you. And this is the view from 53rd and Horton Streets. And this is a view from 53rd looking west. Now the parking garage. So Horton is at the bottom and this is the parking garage. Other than parking spaces, it also accommodates bicycle, long-term bicycle storage as well as an amenity cafe space that will be open to the public. In addition, they are also proposing an emergency center, operation center. This is a condition of approval from the PDP that is requiring them to propose design and build an EOC for the city to use. So this building, this is the elevation of the building. This has not changed from the August Planning Commission. And this is the rendering, nighttime rendering. This kind of provides you, so on, on the right side is the garage building and this is the Sherwin-Williams residential building that is under construction at the moment. So it kind of gives you the interface between the two buildings. There is a setback here at the ground level as well as setback here in order to increase, increase privacy for the residential units. This kind of gives you better clarity in terms of the setbacks. So building to building setbacks about 37 feet and at the upper levels, it gets increased further and goes up to 81 feet. So this building has undergone a number of changes since this proposal was brought forward. One is the reduction of parking count to 1,991 spaces today. Originally, it was 2,400 spaces and then it was reduced to 2,018 and now it is 1,991. They had also changed the color of the staircase to bronze and gold that you saw. They provided as a result of commission and community input, approximately 50 foot setback from the Horton Landing Park Eastman, which allows an additional nearly 9,000 square feet of landscape open space adjacent to the city's Horton Landing Park, which is also under construction. They have also provided 10-foot, additional 10-foot setback on the lower stories along the western facade, which increases the separation at the lower level from, between the building face of Sherwin-Williams and the parking structure to 37 feet. Additionally, like I mentioned, there is setback on the upper stories along the western facade, which creates a distance of 81 feet between the Sherwin-Williams building and the parking structure. They have also added a green wall on the western facade from level three to five, again, the one that faces the Sherwin-Williams building D. So these two were the park design in the first study session on the top and the second study session. And this is what is the current proposal. As you can see, in response to Commissioner comment, in the August study session, the western elevation, the green wall has been extended all along the building facade and the applicant will be providing more details of this green wall that is being proposed. In addition to the other changes to the parking garage is the reduction in number of driveways from three to two. At the first study session, the proposal was to have three driveways which would allow vehicles to go in and come out. That has been reduced to two and there's also been revision in turn movements in and out of the garage. As you can see, exiting out is restricted to northbound Horton and you enter in at one place. So this is how you enter and your exiting is restricted to this direction. In terms of parking, this parking structure will provide parking for the existing building B4 and as well as for the four new R and D building that is being proposed. So this parking will cater to R and D space, which amounts to 1.2 million square feet. Typically, life sciences businesses need space both for lab and office on a half and half basis. And the thing that is different in this proposal is the parking requirement. The PDP specifies what the parking will be for this proposal and it does so by metric of a certain number of spaces per employee and specifically 0.81 spaces per employee. In contrast, our general parking regulations are based on square footage, but since this is an approved PDP, the proposal needs to follow the guidelines and metrics that are included there. So the total number of employees estimated to occupy the four new buildings and the existing building four is 2,964. So the total number of parking spaces required by the PDP based on the parking ratio of 0.81 spaces per employee comes to 2,401 spaces. What they are providing is 1,991. So the proposal provides about 400 parking spaces less than what is called for by the PDP. So the proposal provides about four hundred parking spaces less than what is called for by the PDP. There are some bicycle infra-infra- infrastructure improvements that are being proposed as part of this project. It's the one-way cycle tracks in each direction on Horton Street from Fifty Third Street to Forty Fifth Street. One-way cycle tracks in each direction on Fifty Third Street from Horton Street to Hollis. A divertor at Stanford Avenue and Horton Street. A pedestrian hybrid beacon protected crosswalk at the parking structure on Horton Street and a traffic signal at the intersection of Horton Street and Fifty Third Street. So these above measures will provide the following changes to the roadway operations. At the traffic diverters at the Horton and Stanford intersection, will prohibit vehicle through movements on northbound and southbound Horton Street. Right turn prohibition for vehicles exiting the garage. The one-way cycle tracks on Horton Street between Fifty Third and Forty Fifth Street would be protected with softer hotscape buffers or raised. And one-way cycle tracks on Fifty Third Street between Horton Street and Hollis Street, which would be protected with softer hotscape buffers or raised. Coming to tree removal and preservation, a little bit about the street trees versus private trees. So are the municipal code, municipal codes, urban forestry ordinance or the UFO kind of outlines the tree preservation regulations for the city. And it specifies that a street tree remove, a tree removal permit is required only for street trees. Street trees are defined as trees that occur on public right-of-way and also on property owned by the city. And it is only these street trees that require tree removal permit from the planning commission. Regarding, regarding the UFO, it also provides guidance regarding the private trees. And this is for projects on private property that require discretionary city, city approval by the Director, Planning Commission, or City Council, as the case may be, may require that the existing healthy onsite trees be preserved and incorporated into project unless this is shown to be infeasible. So the initial proposal, which is included in your staff report, was removal of twenty-two street trees and removal of hundred and twenty-two private trees. And that was to be replaced with seventy-five new trees along Stanford Avenue and Horton, Hollis, and Fifty Third Streets, plus ninety-five new trees along Chiron Way and in various plaza areas. So this is the tree proposal that has been included in the staff report. So the, what you see in green are existing trees that will stay and will be preserved. The ones in brown are street trees, and these are twenty-two, which were proposed to be removed. And the rest of these streets along Hollis and Chiron Way are private trees. So as I mentioned, the UFO requires tree removal permit for only street trees. And the staff recommendation is to approve removal of only nine street trees, which are located along the west side of Horton Street, fronting the proposed garage. And the reason for our recommendation is that in order to accommodate this garage, it is not quite possible to save these trees. These two are in the way of the filing. This, these two trees are within the overhang footprint. This is within the plaza area. This is in front of the crosswalk, and this is in where the driveways are located. In terms of private trees, which is in this section, the applicant will be proposing a new plan. And it will be presented by them in terms of what they intend to do now. They are, they have tried to save a good number of trees, and those details will be provided for your consideration after my presentation. Talking about the findings that the commission needs to make in order to approve this proposal. And the two findings are that the final development plan substantially conforms to the PDP and that the changes and conditions of approval specified by the City Council in its approval of the PDP have been met. Because our regulations do not provide a formal definition of substantial conformity, the term is commonly understood to require consistency with essential aspects of the preliminary project and allows for minor qualifications. So below are the criteria that were developed by staff to facilitate making finding of substantial conformity. And these are that there are no substantial changes in land use from the PDP, that the essential aspects of the PDP are unchanged or enhanced, and that there are no substantial increase in the overall density and intensity of the project. We believe that these findings can be made, and these have been outlined extensively in the staff report. We also have urban planning partners who assisted us in preparing, preparing both the SEQA addendum as well as a PDP consistency analysis. And they are available here for any questions that may come up. In terms of environmental review and EIR, EIR was prepared for the Chiron, Chiron PUD PDP and approved by the city back in August in ninety-five. And a SEQA addendum memo has been prepared in order to analyze whether any of the conditions specified under the SEQA guidelines would require supplemental or subsequent EIR. As detailed in the addendum attached to the staff report, the conclusion was that there are no substantial changes in the proposed project, nor changes to the circumstances under which the project will be undertaken and nor any new information of substantial importance would require a preparation of a supplemental or subsequent EIR. As I had mentioned earlier, that staff is forwarding additional conditions of approval. These were, these were also forwarded to the commission earlier today in form of a memo. And, and I will briefly go through the conditions that, that we are proposing in terms of additional language. So this condition of approval, the additional language that we are including has been underlined. And this is that the plan shall include physical features to discourage vehicles from turning right onto Fifty Third Street from Chiron Way. The idea being that the Horton Street is a bicycle boulevard and to minimize the use of it by vehicles. The other condition of approval that is being forwarded is regarding the design and the goal of the traffic divertor at Horton Street and Stanford Avenue. So what this language that is being, that you see on the screen is trying to do is to, A, clarify that this divertor will be designed in accordance with the design shown in the bicycle pedestrian plan that we have. And also to, the goal would be to prevent all through non-emergency vehicular traffic on Horton between intersection of Horton Street and Stanford Avenue. There is also a language for reducing vehicle conflicts with bicycles and pedestrians. It also includes that when the engineering design is done, if these objectives cannot be met, then the Public Works Director would forward this proposal to the City Council for review and approval. The other condition that is being forwarded is this one. And it clarifies that the one-way cycle tracks shall be designed as raised, separated one-lane cycle tracks with consideration for adequate drainage, vehicle and pedestrian crossings at intersections, driveways, and crosswalks. All right, so in terms of our recommendation, we are recommending that the commission approve Resolution FTP nineteen oh two that is attached to the staff report and the conditions of approval. In additions to the conditions of approval outlined in the memo to the PC and which I just, I, I, which I just highlighted. The second is, second motion is to approve the revised Resolution Number Three Twenty-One dash zero zero one, approving removal of nine street trees located on the west side of Horton Street. And the change here is that staff is now recommending that the applicant pay the replacement value of the trees to be removed. And you see the dollar amount here. This change has been in response to the number of, we received about twelve to thirteen comments from members of Publix regarding trees and removal of those trees. So that is in response to that, that they pay these replacement values so that this money can be used by the city to fund additional trees elsewhere in the city. So that concludes my presentation. I am here for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Chair Thompson, I would like, I'd like to make one small clarification to your presentation. She mentioned the urban forestry ordinance. That is another part of the municipal law that's not part of the planning regulations. And that is the ordinance that requires planning commission approval to remove street trees. However, the portion that allows the planning commission to require mature trees on private property be retained, that is not actually part of the urban forestry ordinance. That is in the planning regulations, and it's in Section nine four five oh three C. So I just wanted to clarify that for.
Thank you, Charlie. So this is the point in time where the quest, any questions for Maru? And I'm just gonna poll the commissioners. So Vice Chair Young, do you have any questions for staff?
Um, hi, only one question. Great, great. Thing on Maru, one question. When they replace the trees to the city, a replacement anywhere in the city? How is that? Can you just kind of elaborate where these are supposed to go?
So the trees, they are replacing the trees on site. And you will see the revised plan that they now have for the tree replacement. And it is also in your packet. I don't have the graphic that right now with me. But the applicant will be showing you in detail the trees, the replacement trees in terms of where they will be going. Essentially, they are all along Hollis, as well as on Horton, Washley on Fifty Third, and within various plazas and pasos. And you will be seeing more detailed graphics in applicant's presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner Keller?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chief.
Thank you. I had a question around the changes and conditions of approval that were created by the, or passed by the City Council in response to the PDP or attached to the PDP in nineteen ninety-five. Have those been provided to us in any of the materials that we've reviewed?
No, we have, we do not have in the staff, we did, no, it's not in the staff report. But we did look, go through that exercise of ensuring that the conditions that were in the PDP, which were relevant today, a lot of them have either been built or been, you know, complied with. Some are not applicable because so much time has passed in terms of various things. And, and the ones, for example, a good example is that of the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, that was a condition in the PDP, which has been incorporated into the project proposal.
Okay, I'd be interested in, in learning more about the transportation demand management aspect of that because I believe that's referred to in the UPP report as well. But I wasn't sure what that actual language was around, around the TDM requirement in the original COAs.
I, if you give me a little time, I can come back with that language before the, before we end the meeting today.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Is that the final comment? Commissioner Chief?
I believe so. Is now the best time to ask questions about the UPP report in general? Or should I hold on to those for later?
So are they, well, if they're staff-related, I think you should probably just ask Maru if these are more applicant-oriented or not.
Also, I can just go ahead and ask the question. We can talk about whether it's now, better now or later. So my understanding is that the applicant hasn't submitted a transportation demand management plan at this time. But there was one modeled in the UPP report. Is that correct?
So yes, so there is a TDM report in the PDP that was reviewed by UPP and staff. And we do have a condition of approval in the FTP, which requires a, to first of all, have a baseline TD. You know, where, what, where are we starting at? Unfortunately, we do not have any records of the TDM measures and how they performed since, you know, because the Chiron has been built, it has been operating. So for whatever reason, we don't have any records of what they have done to date. So the condition of approval in the FTP requires them to first establish baseline TDM. And then there are monitoring requirements that they have to follow throughout the life of this project. And I can direct you to that condition. Give me one second. You'll see them on on page twenty-four of the conditions of approval. And I can read it out to you. This is on page twenty-four of conditions of approval. And it says, prior to the issuance of the first temporary certificate of occupancy TCO for a research and development building, the applicant shall submit the following information related to existing building B four located at fifty-three hundred Chiron Way in order to establish a baseline, current number of employees, existing motor chairs, including information on parking locations and carpooling, commute trip lengths, typical work schedules, including time of day and days per week, parking facilities, operations, and occupancy by time of day, and existing TDM program elements in place. It goes on further to state that this applicant, the applicant shall designate a TDM coordinator who will be responsible for providing TDM monitoring reports to the Community Development Director. The baseline TDM report shall include the contact information of the coordinator and the baseline TDM report shall also consider the measures identified in the PUD PDP condition of approval number forty-five. And the applicant shall update the director of any changes to the contact information. So essentially, what they have in the PDP condition of approval regarding TDM is what they need to follow moving forward. And in addition to that, they need to establish a baseline TDM. So that's this condition in the FTP will cover the TDM requirements. Does that help?
Yeah, that helps a lot. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I do have a question for staff. Maru, I, you know, thank you for clarifying between the street trees and the private trees and the relationship of the urban forestry ordinance. I know that you'd been sort of keeping those groupings separate. But in terms of just totaling the, the trees before the project and after the project, what is the difference?
So that is being done by the applicant as we speak. So they will be able to provide you what was in the staff report, total number of trees to be preserved and replaced, and what they are proposing now in terms of total number of trees being proposed and replaced. So you will get clarity on the trees in the presentation.
Okay, great. Another question I have for you regarding the parking and how it's calculated. It's calculated by employees. And then there is some additional development capacity in the, in the PDP after this. Would, would there be that a similar, if another building were to find a location, would there be a similar calculation with the, just the number of employees and then the same parking need?
That is correct. That is the, that is in the PDP. And so any FDP, and, and this, at this point would be Griffles, who may be, you know, coming in with additional buildings. And they are also subject to the same PDP conditions.
Okay, okay. And so there wasn't really a replacement calculation. It was really just predicated on the number of employee. It was really just predicated on the number of employee calculation.
For the BMR properties.
Okay. Okay.
Which includes the existing building before.
Yeah, okay. So that's what I thought. All right. Fantastic. Yeah, thanks. That clarifies. Those were my questions. So I think, I think I had the final questions. Anyone else? Just pull one more time. Any questions come up in the conversation? Okay. All right. Well, then we'll move on to the applicant presentation.
All right. I am going to go ahead and elevate the representatives of Biomed to panelists so they can make their presentation and you will see six more people joining here. One of them is actually twice because he's by both telephone and video. So there's actually five people who are coming. See. Hang on. Missed somebody. Oh, wait a minute. Salil. Hey. Just double check. You're with me here, sorry. Okay, did I get John McCow?
Yeah, John is on.
I am here.
Oh, okay. I guess, I guess you're all.
We just need Sarah Thompson from Bionic Landscape Architects is the one remaining person.
Sorry, mister. Oh, she's under B for Bionic. Okay. And there she is. Should all be here now, I think.
Hey, I'm going to share my screen.
Okay, should we get started?
Yes.
Can everyone hear me? Okay?
Yeah, yes, we can hear you.
Thank you.
You're just a little faint, so if you can speak up.
Okay. Good evening. Good to see everybody. I'm Salil Piyapaly, VP of Development for Biomed Realty. Thanks for taking the time to review our FTP application and, and also to participate in a detailed and methodical process over the past year. I, I want to take a minute to thank the city staff for all their efforts over the past weeks and months. Next slide. Thank you. Tonight, we're joined by our team, John McCow, Flat Architects, Sarah Moose Thompson of Bionic Landscape Architects, Claire Maxfield of Atelier Ten, and Ethan Wash, Biomed Realty. Together, we, we recap the progression that we've made on the campus design since two thousand nineteen December and also walk through some very recent updates that we've made to the program. We'll talk a little bit about sustainability and our commitments to lead certification for the project. Next slide. The project we're presenting tonight will transform our site. The site that sat vacant and unused and fenced off for over a decade. Our, our commitment to Emeryville has remained steady and strong. And our vision here is to create a hub of world-class life science research in Emeryville. This is something we've done successfully many times before on the global stage. We truly believe that this will elevate Emeryville's role as a critical element of the Bay Area R and D ecosystem, which in turn is one of the most productive and influential in the world. Stating the obvious, but investment in research has never been more timely. We're right in the middle of the raging global pandemic, and this has become literally a matter of life and death. Next slide please. This is our fourth meeting with the planning commission to present our project, seek feedback and share progress. In addition to discussions in this forum, we have also reviewed with and incorporated feedback from various other committees and such. The Emeryville BPAC, Parks and Rec, Bike East Bay, our info sessions with the community, local businesses and our neighbors. The project we present tonight reflects the feedback of all of these groups and substantial collaboration with the city staff. Given the path that we've been on together, a majority of the content here should be quite familiar and very easy for you to navigate. Having said that, we're always looking to build a better widget. And we came up with some revisions as recently as yesterday in response to some late breaking feedback from the community. More on that from our team shortly. Next slide. Our project brings a number of assets to the community. These include very high quality urban design and architecture, over three acres of new, very thoughtfully programmed, multi-use open space available to the public, extensive street improvements oriented to bikes and pedestrians. Many city blocks were, more on that from Ethan later on in the deck. Our campus is projected to contribute over $2.5 million per year in additional local taxes. R and D does not work remotely. And this job creation and spending is happening right here locally. Spending at local businesses, et cetera, at this purpose-built R and D facility. And we expect this campus will stand on par with the best in the world. We, we have a great, a fantastic starting point here in Emeryville. This site alone is already home to two Nobel Prize winning discoveries, and we hope many more. And we are ready to move forward and make this vision a reality. With that, let me hand it over to John McCow. Thanks again, and I look forward to answering questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Salil. Can everyone hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Yes, sounding good, good. It's a good sign. So as Salil said, my name is John Miko with Flat Architects. And I want to say that I've been fortunate to have been involved with this project with this site since Chiron originally assembled the property back in the early nineteen nineties. And I'm especially thankful to have the opportunity now to actually participate in the re-envisioning and development of this campus at this time. Now, in the prior presentations, we've talked at length about the site history, about the overall design intent and very specific details about the buildings. And in those discussions, the project has received strong support from the planning commission, from the various subcommittees like Parks and Recreation, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And even as Salo pointed out, the neighbors and community members that include griffals, lanars, Imergen, and others. At the same time, there was also a tremendous amount of input and into what could be done to improve the project and make it even better. And so over these last thirteen months, fourteen months, we feel that we've listened, we've reacted, and we've adjusted the project to result in what we think is actually a much better project, one that we're really excited to present to you over the course of this process and year tonight. So I want to touch on these six guiding principles, which are elements that have not changed since we originally identified these at the start of the project back in twenty nineteen. And we haven't wavered in the original vision, even though some of the details have been developed. Those six items really are first and foremost that we break down the original super block that was a fundamental part of the design for the original Chiron campus and for the preliminary development plan. We want to break this down into smaller buildings. We want to intersperse green space connections to the street, allow penetration of light and air into the campus and really create a more human scale and a friendly building environment. In order to open that up, we need to eliminate the fences. Right now, the entire campus is fenced off so that there is no public access to these spaces. But through the creation of this new plan for the campus, we want to allow people to move freely from public streets to the interior spaces of the campus and to take advantage of the new open spaces and the circulation routes that that will provide. A key part of that is changing the character of Chiron Way, which, as you can see from image two, looking down Chiron Way to the north, is currently a paved service drive. And so the objective here is to make it feel much more like a plaza space that's engaged with the rest of the open space of the campus. And that encourages movement of pedestrians and bicycles through the heart of the campus. It'll still allow fire and service vehicles to gain access. But the goal is to slow the extent and the pace of traffic through that area and really focus on the people and the bicycles and how they can relate to the other adjacent spaces. As we talk about item number four, we really are focused on the integration of this campus fully with the regional transportation network and especially the bicycle pathways that link Emeryville to regional transportation hubs, to the residential areas and to the other commercial areas all along the, the East Bay. And the goal here is to make the areas fronting the BMR site, the areas that we're responsible for, a preeminent example of safe and efficient bicycle-friendly design. And we'll incorporate raised track bicycle lanes, other key features that we'll talk about in some later slides. And it's not enough to provide open space and public access, but we really need to create spaces with special features that appeal equally to both the building tenants and the local community. So these spaces can be active during the workday, during the evenings and even on the weekends. And so what we've tried to do is to carefully program these spaces to provide a diverse range of activities that are going to attract users. And the spaces have been located strategically to enhance the existing network, connect directly with the adjacent elements like the Emeryville Greenway and the new Horton Landing pedestrian and bicycle overpass. So that all of these elements become an integral part of the city fabric and a part of that community circulation network. And finally, the last piece that we've been focused intently on over the course of the development is the creation of architecture that consists of fresh new buildings with a modern, state-of-the-art form, function and appearance, and with highly sustainable credentials. The exterior skin is intended to be very transparent, take advantage of the light views. And we're also going to use high-performance materials to maximize the building energy efficiency. At the same time, we can't really turn our backs on the legacy of the Legareta Building Four. And so the goal is to use scale and materials to create linkages with that building. But rather than mimicking that building design, we want to complement and frame it and treat it as the center point, focal point of the campus when it's complete. So the other component that I mentioned here is also that we want to maintain the strong vertical focus at the corner of Stanford and Hollis Street with the tower at that particular location or a taller building than, let me say. It's not as tall as the original tower proposed there in the Legareta design, but it still will establish a kind of benchmark within the city for people to relate to the campus and, and the whole new development. Next slide. So for tonight's discussion, rather than rehashing all the metal, many details of the project really want to focus our discussion on the many accomplishments and improvements that have been made over the course of the past fifteen months through all this input that we've received, as I mentioned earlier. So this slide is actually meant to represent what we consider to be the four stages of life for the project. The first stage, if you will, is the original PDP, which was approved in nineteen ninety-five, and it was conceived as a integrated biopharmaceutical, excuse me, biopharmaceutical campus with singular architectural style developed by Ricardo Legareta. At that time, the site was insular and self-contained. The buildings were relatively massive and they were separated from the street. The circulation paths had third floor. We can see here the campus rendering in the middle row and then an elevation of the parking structure as it existed at that time, showing kind of the bulk and mass of the buildings as they were envisioned. Not at all what we're trying to accomplish today. So what we consider to be the second stage of the project life is really characterized by the columnist study session number one, which was the original submission in December twenty nineteen. You know, at this time, we had developed a new vision for the campus. We had established these six principles I had mentioned previously. But obviously, there was still room for improvement. The image in the middle represents the building one and two view from the corner of Stanford and Hollis. And the lower image represents the status of the building thirteen, fourteen design at that time. And through that study session, we received relatively positive support, but also comments that reflected that there was a long, long opportunity, big opportunity for improvement of all these design aspects. So from there, we moved to the third session, which is where the most significant changes actually were incorporated, dramatically changed the nature of the campus as we see it today. You can see here in the center slide, buildings eight A and eight B were incorporated along with the new PCR Plaza between the buildings to celebrate that Nobel Prize that was won you know, by the research that was done at this particular site. The same time, the building parking garage underwent significant transformation, changing from a relatively blocky, banal kind of a building to an exciting architectural statement that incorporated these dramatic stair towers and this kind of complicated and interesting screen wall. The building at that time also incorporated the setbacks that faced the Sherwood Williams property across the property line. And then finally, we come to what we're calling stage four, which is the current presentation as it is today. Here we see a picture of the site model, and you'll see a few more images of that along the way. But we've actually built a model to help us visualize and improve upon project. And in doing so, we've recognized here the building two, three was actually had become another opportunity, shall we say, for improvement. And we'll talk a little bit about what that means. But the design of the building two, three has been improved. And we've continued to make improvements to the parking garage, especially on the side facing the west and the Sherman Williams property where we've incorporated some additional feature elements. So what this slide is intended to do really is to show how far the project has come from nineteen ninety-five to December twenty nineteen to February of twenty twenty-two. And we'll go through some more of the details as we move to the next slide, please. So this is a continuation of the story that I was just telling, where we focus on some additional key changes that have occurred since the project was originally submitted. We talked about most of these in the prior slides, but I want to highlight a few additional elements. First is the reduction, as Maru had talked about extensively, from twenty-four hundred to nineteen ninety-one spaces. It's actually two thousand, four thousand, but you get the idea. The second thing is the creation of over three acres of public space that will now be accessible for twenty-four seven use through the elimination of the fencing and the opening up of the campus to public access. And also want to mention the improvements to the public infrastructure with changes made to the utility systems as well as the incorporation of these safety-enhanced raised bike lanes. And finally, the commitment to sustainable design and lead circulation, excuse me, lead certification, which we'll talk about more in the further slides. So next slide. So in keeping with the theme of highlighting the building evolution and all of these changes that have been incorporated, just want to touch on a few things for each building. And again, here you see that study model that we've created. It's a shame that we don't have an opportunity to meet with you in person and bring the model so that you can. and bring the model so that you can all look at it. It's quite impressive in terms of the scale and level of detail. But sometime in the future, maybe we'll put it somewhere where it can be more easily viewed. Next slide. So talking about building one, the building form and the size remain the same as was originally proposed for the site in our study session number one. Although we have changed a number of details which are reflected here, we've refined the massing on the north side of the building, recognizing that this will be the most prominent view as people are moving down Hollis and approaching from the north to Emeryville. And so we've increased the articulation of this facade and have added more interest. We've also added a natural wood material to the soffits of each of these setbacks so that we can kind of add interesting color to the facade, especially when visible from the ground below. And we've improved the first floor conditions, changing the setbacks, adjusting the building facade, all of which is focused on improving the pedestrian experience and the relationship of the building to the street. So relatively subtle changes, but effective nonetheless, I think, in accomplishing a better fit with the building and the street and kind of the overall character of the campus. Next slide. So I mentioned that building two, three underwent a significant change as well. And you can see that here in the before and after images. The overall size of the building and the basic building height and massing has remained the same, but we've significantly modified the exterior skin of the building to really focus on a few key areas and really enhance the experience and the integration with the campus. Next slide. Those modifications include breaking down the building scale to really incorporate two key parts. One is the building mass, the glass element. That represents the upper stories of the building, and that's integrated with this lower element, which is actually a masonry skin. We've called it a rotated cube at the south end of the building that reflects the bend in the street at that location and breaks the building massing down into component parts. The masonry base of the building actually wraps around the building and reemerges on the Chiron Way, excuse me, the Chiron Plaza side of the building and interlocks with this glass facade. And as we can see on the upper right-hand image, this rotated cube now actually creates a complement and an area of focus for the PSL entry here, adjacent to the end of building four, as you can see in that upper image. And the building entrance is now located at that side, which adds activity and will help draw people into the center of the campus down the PSL. Finally, image three, as I mentioned, represents the, again, this masonry grid reemerging on the Chiron Plaza side of the building. And it's also a part of the function of the bird safety program, as we'll talk about in a few more minutes. Next slide. Which leads us to a discussion of bird safety, which was an important consideration as we were making the improvements to the building. And we've tried to thoughtfully integrate this into the building design. We've obviously paid close attention to the requirements of the city of Emeryville Municipal Ordinance, ensuring that we're fully compliant with that. But we've also researched other state-of-the-art thinking and what other organizations like the Audubon Society, US Fish and Wildlife, and even other progressive cities are doing. And those provisions really start at grade level by eliminating highly reflective surfaces that will disorient birds, coupled with extensive ground-level planting to shield the view of the building from the approach birds. As you move to the upper level buildings, the glazing will be treated with various techniques that include patterned glass, silk-screen frit on the glass that will comply with the two-by-four guidelines that is visible to birds. And we'll also be utilizing an exposed framing grid for the curtain wall system rather than a smooth seamless glass box that will, again, provide a visual cue to birds that this is a solid object and not a transparent element. Finally, we're going to incorporate automatic lighting shut-off for all the interior spaces and shade pockets for the interior exposure so that will be a part of the base building element, again, to help ensure that birds perceive that this is a solid object and not a transparent element. Next slide. So as we've mentioned previously, the portion of the project that underwent the most significant changes through this development process was the parking garage. In keeping with the theme of highlighting the building evolution and specific changes that we've incorporated, I just want to touch on a number of key changes. First of all, we dramatically changed the overall building massing, stepping back the backside of the building away from the Sherwin-Williams properties. We've added the three stair tower elements that you can see here. One on this corner, another one on the up is the south corridor and one at the center of the building, adjacent to the new Park at Park at Park, which has been added along Horton Street. So the building facade steps back at that particular location, and we've taken advantage of that to add a parklet in that area, which Sarah will talk about in a few more minutes. The other key aspects here, and one of the most important things, I think, for the overall campus is the setback that's been now added. The north face of the building has been pushed back away from the Horton Landing Park entrance. And we've added a significant amount of additional space, basically doubling or the doubling the size of Horton Landing Park through the addition of what we've called Horton Plaza. And we've also added a café element at the base of the building, which will serve to activate this kind of both throughout the day and hopefully even into the evenings and weekends to create a real focal point at this key location in the city. Other changes include modifications to the facade, where we've added framing and stepping elements to increase the variation to add interest to the facade. Next slide. Here we see, what I was referring to earlier, was the setback of the building, the lower portion of the building. And the image on the right-hand side shows the five-story base of the building and then the significant step back that occurs there to the upper levels of the building. We've highlighted the area on the lower facade, which was the original extent of the living wall. And now the plan is actually to increase the extent of the living wall and bring it up to the upper portions of the building as well. And we'll also investigating incorporating horizontal elements, vines, cables, even structural elements across the rooftop of the exposed parking area to further obscure the view of cars from the residences across the property line. So through that discussion, what I've tried to do is summarize the highlights of the major changes that we've incorporated as the result of all this input that we received from the commission and from the community, and all of which we agree have greatly improved the project, as I hope you'll agree. So now, I think at this point, we want to introduce Sarah Moose Thompson from Bionic Landscape Architecture. She's going to talk in more detail about the landscape and open space program for the campus.
Thank you, John. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Great, okay. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Moose Thompson. I'm a senior associate with Bionic, and we're the landscape architect designing the landscape and public ground for the project. I'm going to give an overview of the updates that we've made to the open space. And I think similarly to John, as John mentioned, we heard a number of comments from commissioners, from the Rec Park Committee, as well as from the community. We've tried to incorporate those into this revision, and we agree that it has really enhanced and improved the overall proposal. So I'm excited to share that with you tonight. One goal that we heard loud and clear was to create the new open spaces as distinct places with unique programs and amenities that will make these spaces both usable and attractive for the community in addition to tenants on a regular basis during the week and the weekend. And so in response to this, we looked closely at our programming through a lens of likely uses of each space. And we've choreographed our proposed parks and plazas with a coordinated and diverse set of amenities and offerings that will be unique to this campus. And they provide new gathering and dining areas in Stanford Plaza and Chiron Plaza. They highlight the historic identity of the campus in PCR Plaza. They focus on sustainability and creating gardens for pollinator species throughout the campus. And they'll offer the city a new stunning park in Horton Plaza at a prominent entry point in the city. The new parks and plazas will be beautiful, striking, and remarkable. They're located along a vibrant and publicly accessible public ground spine that serves as the connective tissue of the campus. It's designed to be pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly, and it's interwoven into the existing fabric of the city, connecting to the bicycle network, the new bayfront bridge to the west, and the greenway to the north. Today, I'm going to zoom into the updates we've made specifically around the parking garage, building 1314, including Horton Plaza, Horton Street Pocket Park, and the Horton Garage Pocket Park. Next slide. So in direct response to commissioner comments, we focused a lot of study and effort to making design improvements and programming on all sides of the garage to make these spaces publicly accessible, usable for the community and tenants alike, and truly remarkable. On Horton Street, we're proposing a new mid-block crossing for pedestrian access. Directly adjacent to the new crossing, we've created an enhanced pocket park, which you can see in the upper-left image. For scale, this is about three times the size of an average parklet. At this mid-block point, the sidewalk widens into a plaza-like seating and garden space. A vertical garden, similar to the one on the west side of the garage, serves as a soft backdrop to the pocket park and an iconic bench and street furnishings along the Horton Street edge provide spaces for seating, gathering, and rest. On the west side of building 1314, between the garage and Sherwin-Williams, we've added a new pocket park that immerses pedestrians in a lush garden space lined by trees on one side and the vertical garden on the other side, which you can see in the upper right-hand image. We understand from the city and community that pollinator gardens and the city's urban forests are extremely important, valued, and loved. Our team has worked in collaboration with the city arborists to refine our plant palette and tree selection to this end. At this time, we've identified a selection of plants and trees that are bay-friendly, low-water-use, and drought-tolerant, well-suited for the urban environment and climate resilient. They will create vibrant gardens and a landscape that's striking throughout the seasons with bursts of color and interest. The species are complementary to the existing trees and will serve to enhance the overall campus habitat for a diverse range of pollinator species. Next slide. Horton Plaza on the north side of the garage, in between the garage and Horton Landing Park, is a really unique opportunity to create a truly spectacular park for the city and community of Emeryville. Located at a critical node in the city, Horton Plaza will be an important entry and destination. We heard from the commissioners, the Rec Park Committee, and the community the desire to make Horton Plaza a family-friendly and pet-friendly park. We also heard multiple requests for specific program in Horton Plaza, including spaces for play and climbing, nature play, fitness, and recreation. To capitalize on this opportunity to make Horton Plaza a truly amazing park, and in direct response to these comments, our team has adjusted the design to maximize the total park size and enhance the park with a diverse set of usable and attractive amenities that include the following: fitness elements, sculptural elements for play and climbing, sculptures for learning and intrigue, a field for recreation and sports, earthworks beneath a grove, as well as other natural elements such as climbing locks for nature play, a plaza adjacent to the retail space for outdoor dining, sitting, meeting, relaxing, and picnicking, a plaza space adjacent to the bike repair with bicycle parking, as well as a number of lush garden spaces. At the backdrop to the park will be the striking garage facade and the newly added vertical garden on the north facade, which you can see in the upper right hand of the rendering on top. We also heard from commissioners and city staff a comment to refine the park's circulation. We ultimately studied the desire lines and revised the plaza and pathways for the most ideal circulation between Horton Street and Horton Landing Park, as well as Horton Plaza, for ease of access and optimal use. With these enhancements, the new Horton Plaza will be a beautiful and remarkable new park on the campus, and we believe it will serve as a vibrant destination at this critical city juncture. So at this point, that concludes the updates that we have for the open space at this time. And now I'm going to hand the presentation off to Claire to discuss sustainability.
Hi, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'm Claire Maxfield. I'm director of Italia 10, and we are a firm of sustainability consultants focused on the built environment, working internationally. And we've been working with Biomed in the Bay Area for the last eight years. So for the Center of Innovation, we've identified three main areas where we think we can have a strong, positive impact. So carbon emissions, first and foremost. We intend to look at energy savings, onsite renewables, and embodied carbon of materials, which is the carbon emitted in the manufacture of those materials. Those are really the three big pieces of the carbon puzzle. On the waterfront, drought hasn't been in the news much lately, but we still need to plan for it. So for labs, efficient cooling towers will have our best impact. And we're looking at indoor fixtures and irrigation, landscape design to lower our whole water footprint for the campus as a whole. And on the health and wellness front, obviously, that's first and foremost in people's minds today. There's a wide range of issues to consider as part of a healthy campus. And we're studying everything from active design to healthier materials, to ventilation rates for lab safety. And, you know, we're aware that these goals might sound fairly abstract. So in addition, we're committing to lead version four silver certification, which is above and beyond Emeryville's requirements. So with that, I'll hand it over to Ethan from Biomed.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Great. Good evening, commissioners, and thank you, Claire. So I'm going to walk you through the final section of our presentation, revisiting some information we've shared in the past about the parking garage and also covering some recent changes we've made to our biking network, vehicle access, and tree plan. I will be somewhat duplicative of the information that Maru had provided to you, but bear with me. So as John indicated in his presentation a few minutes ago, one of the ways that our project has evolved over the course of this process is that we have reduced the number of parking spaces of the project from 2,400, the number indicated in the original PDP, to 1,991 spaces. The 1,991 spaces represents a parking ratio of 1.63 per 1,000 square feet for the overall campus, which includes existing building four. And it represents a ratio of 1.5 per 1,000 square feet after you remove the spaces associated with building four from that equation. As this slide shows, the 1.5 ratio, you can see in the upper right and also around the slide, the 1.5 ratio is well below the number allowed by the City of Emeryville code, which currently would allow 1.95 spaces per 1,000 square feet for our use. And is also substantially below the ratio that other jurisdictions in the region with similar transportation options as Emeryville allow for our proposed use. On an employee basis, our ratio assumes that one-third of the employee population will arrive at work either in a carpool or using an alternative means of transportation. All this to say, without meaning to belabor the point, is that the reduced parking ratio we've included in the FDP is our good faith and serious effort to meet every those goals related to transportation. So on to the bike lanes and some changes that we've recently made, also described by Maru. So in the past, we've shown a bicycle plan that provides new protected bike lanes on Horton Street from 53rd Street to the, down to the south end of our project site and sheroes along 53rd Street between Horton and Hollis Streets. As the image in the upper left shows, we have now extended the bicycle lanes on Horton beyond our project frontage, all the way down to the intersection with 45th Street. And as the image to the right shows, we've also replaced the sheroes on 53rd Street with fully protected bike lanes. And lastly, as also mentioned by Maru, as the modified conditions of approval further clarify, all of the bike lanes that we're proposing to build will be built as raised bike lanes, further enhancing cyclical safety and preventing vehicles from obstructing them. So the slide on your screens right now shows three changes that we've made to the project's vehicular access plan based on community and city staff feedback. Each of these changes was made to reduce the potential for conflicts with bicyclists and pedestrians while also encouraging a smooth flow of cars into and out of the garage. First, in the upper left, we've revised how cars may access and exit the garage. Cars may access from either direction, north or south, on Horton, at one of two adjacent entry lanes at the northern part of the garage. You can see my mouse there. Cars may exit the garage at one of two exits located at the northern and southern parts of the garage. Cars may exit the garage at one of two exits located at the northern and southern parts of the garage. Upon exiting, cars may make a left turn only and then travel north on Horton. This is shown in the FDP package that was submitted to you. Second, we've added a restriction at the intersection of fifty third street and Chiron Way. Let's circle it here. That will prohibit vehicles traveling southbound on Chiron from making a right turn on fifty third street. All with the intention of discouraging vehicles from using Chiron as a through street. This is included in the project's modified conditions of approval. Lastly, we've proposed to divert, and this is shown up here. We've proposed to divert all non emergency vehicles from traveling on Horton Street between the intersection of Horton and Stanford to the north. And our proposed loading access to the south for our proposed building eight B. Which is also currently being used as loading access by griffles. This would ultimately prevent any through traffic from using Horton between Stanford and fifty third and will all be designed with the goal of reducing conflict between pedestrians, cyclists and vehicles. And this, just like the fifty third street, a Chiron turn restriction is also included in the project's modified conditions of approval. So the last topic I'd like to present to you this evening is our updated proposal for trees of the project. The plan shown on the screen is the tree removal plan that was included in our FDP submittal and was based on our initial approach to replace all of the trees of the campus with an updated pallet of species. And in a manner that reflects current urban streetscape planning. As you can see in the upper right, this plan included the removal of one hundred and fifty four trees. In recent days and weeks, we've learned about the community's strong support for the preservation of existing trees from comments received from the public, including Mr. Bouders in his capacity as a local resident. And so we've revised our plan and are no longer asking for you to approve what you see on your screen right now. Instead, we are proposing a new plan that has as its intent the preservation of as many existing trees as is feasible, as well as the addition of many new trees throughout the campus. On the screen before you is our revised tree removal and preservation plan. As shown on the table in the upper right, this revised plan preserves seventy seven of the existing trees and removes seventy seven of which only nine are officially street trees. Such removal is proposed only in instances where the trees directly conflict with a new building, a pedestrian pathway, or in some instances where the extent of rebuilding will make preservation feasible. On the screen now is our revised tree plan. So this shows the preserved trees as well as the proposed new trees. And as you can, sorry, so this incorporates the seventy seven preserved existing trees shown on the previous slide as well as one hundred and thirty eight new trees, both as tree trees and private trees, many of which are located within our publicly accessible open spaces. As you can see in the two tables in the upper right, which compares our original tree plan with our revised tree plan. Not only does this revised tree plan preserve seventy seven of the existing trees, it also results in a total tree count of two hundred and fifteen. Which is forty five more trees than were included in our original plan and sixty one more trees than exist at the site now. And Commissioner Thompson, I believe that answers the question you had asked previously. We also agree that any existing private trees located along Hollis Street that will now be preserved, I'll just circle those. Will also be designated and protected as street trees under the city's urban forestry ordinance. We had the opportunity to present this plan to Mr. Bouders where he expressed his support and we do hope that you will support this new tree plan this evening as well. We also have available the FDP slip sheets that represent this new proposed plan, which I can present to you all as as required. So with that, thank you all very much for your time and we look forward to answering questions from Commissioners.
Thank you very much for the presentation. So at this point, I'd like to ask the Commissioners if they have any questions. I'm gonna again. Pull the group just because it's a little bit easier. So I'm going to switch it up a little bit. Commissioner Chase, you have any questions?
Thank you. I may have more along the way, but just to start, thanks so much for the presentation. It's great to. To see the changes that were made and also all of the great innovations that have come up along the way. One question I had was around the timing of, excuse me, of the construction of the parking garage and. The other buildings. So could you just walk me through when the parking garage would expect to be constructed? And then that in relation to the other buildings?
I can take this. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
In in rough numbers, we're expecting to spend. This year, assuming, you know, the approval of the project, we spend one year in detail drawing, engineering and permitting. And then break ground early next year on a building, a life science research building and a garage. Where we, we think we have an idea of which one, you know, is is the best first lab building to build, but we're also. Sort of querying the market to see which one might be most attractive. So concurrent construction. Garage and life science lab office building. These things usually take about two years to build a shell and a warm core. So that's approximately the timeframe. Of course, that's you know, subject to. Various fine print conditions.
Great, thank you. And related to that, when do you expect that all of the employees that are taken into account in the modeling demand for the parking garage would be employed within the full range of buildings?
Let me look to our team here. Ethan or Cecily, do we have the exact numbers? I know we've done the map before. I don't have it at my fingertips.
Yeah, I can say that the the. The number of employees is based on is assigned in the original PDP to various buildings based on proposed square footages. And so. The total number obviously would be built out, you know, would be onsite at the at the completion of the final R and D building. Also note that Zimerjin is in cap, sorry, rather the the existing building four, you know, where we have a tenant Zimerjin. Is included in that count. So you can imagine that, you know, once they're finished with their TI construction, you'd have. The population represented by them in the current existing building four and then, you know, sequentially from there.
Okay, great.
Does that answer your question? Is that what you had up?
Yeah, it does. I mean, I it would be nice to have a sense of whether, you know, it's expected within, you know, say ten years or, you know, basically. If we build out one thousand nine hundred and ninety one parking spaces and it's done in twenty twenty four. How many years would the parking garage be there and potentially occupied by twenty five percent of that demand versus a hundred percent potentially in the future?
So I think the question is closely tied to, you know, when the campus reaches steady state. And and that timeframe is in the five to seven years, you know, would be my guesstimate at this point. Once we start construction, five to seven years, we hope to have the campus in steady state. Of course, one phase at a time, but that's that would be a reasonable guesstimate.
Okay, thank you. And then related to that, I wanted to go back to the calculations about the number of employees and I was wondering if the. The number of employees expected within the buildings, whether those those figures have been revisited in light of COVID precautions and changes in workspace expectation among different types of. Clients that might be occupying the buildings.
Yeah, we're seeing seismic shifts in the office. Sector, but not in the life science research. You know, it's research isn't something that, you know, happens remotely, you know. Research happens with the equipment with specialty build out onsite. And that we're seeing across our current portfolio right now.
Okay, so no plans to update the the actual number of employees expected?
Yeah, the relative to COVID and, you know, remote working, et cetera, no.
Okay.
And and Salil, we might add that that because it's half lab and half R and D, the density of employees is already less than like what you might see at a typical office space. And so.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then turning to the bike infrastructure, what is the timeline that you're expecting or committing to for putting in the rice recycle tracks, for example?
Maru, do you have the the, I don't have the conditions of approval in front of me, but the triggers are all included in the conditions of approval. So I'm gonna rely on Maru. To answer that if you don't mind, Maru.
Maru, you're on mute.
Yes, I it I believe it is prior to the issuance. It is prior to the issuance of what the parking structure be thirteen fourteen.
Issuance of the building permit.
Correct.
Or the parking structure.
Okay, great. And then I was wondering how the determination was made to go for lead silver as a sustainability level?
I can say, I can start off and then move the Claire for a second. The. You know, we we do this for all our campuses, you know, we do go ahead and, you know, get to lead certification and then sometimes more. One thing we've struggled with is, you know, the shifting of the goalpost standards themselves keep changing and evolving, you know, and and we see a. A flurry of entirely new ways of. Measuring and counting, new currencies keep emerging. And so it's as much about, you know, finding the right thing to go after. So we're holding out for, you know, let's call it for the dust to settle. That's true, you know, of. Sustainability adjectives. And I don't mean it in any, you know, any other way than just a prolifer, you know, and also simple things like charging standards, you know, we're waiting for some of the dust to settle on all this. But let me pause. Claire, you're the expert on this.
Yeah, I mean, I can say that, you know, it's early days in terms of the level of detail of design that you see for something like lead requirements. But we have looked with Biomed and with flat at just sort of charting a path to what we think is feasible and what we think makes sense for laboratory buildings because they they can be more resource intensive than than standard office buildings. And so. You know, lead feels like a good fit. It's a bigger challenge for lab buildings and other building types, but we still think it's applicable. And we think, you know, lead silver is is something that's achievable, but still has environmental impact. So it felt to us like a good path forward to really put some. Specificity to the sustainability goals. That said, I mean, we are looking at things that are. That are maybe a little bigger picture than lead as well. I mean, then that's why we're talking about this holistic look at carbon and water and health and wellness that lead is quite a. Point checking system, but we think it's important also to look at these bigger concepts and make sure we're really thinking about the building's holistic impact. So we're trying to do both of those things, but. Lead silver feels like a tangible, clear path forward that gives us accountability that we think makes sense for the project. And that's why we've kind of committed very specifically to that.
Great, thanks. And related to that, I was wondering if you had looked at the at Emeryville's climate action plan two point zero in any of the work that you did.
Yeah, yeah, we've definitely reviewed it and. Excuse me if I'm speaking incorrectly about it. I don't recall seeing sort of specific building level requirements, but we definitely looked at it to see, you know, are we on track with the city's level of aspiration for greenhouse gas emissions? Are we looking at the right levels of energy efficiency to be in line with what the city wants to need as a whole? But I I I hope I'm correct in saying that there aren't any sort of specific building level targets required in that climate action plan.
Great, okay. And then I was wondering if you thought about in terms of design, you know, as you said, you're kind of at the broad design phase right now, but. How many of the buildings potentially could be constructed with a material like cross laminated timber?
John speak to that a little bit, but there's so it's there's the, you know, there's the narrow question of building material. And there's also the compatibility with life signs occupancy type. Hazard class, et cetera. If John's listening to this, maybe John, you can weigh in on some of the constraints around building.
I mean, or can you?
You can see with timber.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. So yeah, very good question, Commissioner Chase. The use of things, I mean, we're huge advocates of the use of things like cross limited timber and other, you know, more sustainable kind of structural systems. The challenge for lab buildings is a couple of things. First of all, the spans aren't very large. You know, works better for, you know, buildings with smaller spaces, smaller spans, less demanding criteria for loading and vibration. Second thing is that, you know, it's more challenging to use in taller buildings. Certainly, it's being done more these days, but again. You know, more challenging. And the third thing, as Slow mentioned, is typically the classic construction requirements. For the buildings that we deal with, you know, it's usually a type one fire resistant building. And it's much more difficult to achieve with, you know. Naturally combustible material. So, you know, while we looked at it, we haven't found that it's a practical solution to these kind of buildings. But it is definitely, you know, an opportunity for smaller feature elements. For example, if there were a cafe structure or something like that, you know, on the site, you know, that's a. You know, a great opportunity to really take advantage of those kind of building technologies.
Great, thank you. I think just one more question for me right now, which is around on Chiron Way right now, it's designated for like one of the uses would be for drop off and pickup. And I was wondering why that was decided, like why that that aspect is prioritized on Chiron Way?
I can, I can start. What? Can I just say, just in terms of the PDP, so the PDP really speaks to certain types of the uses for the buildings and where they're located. And so. For instance, it didn't want any sort of loading to be taking place on the main street. So Hollis or fifty third. And so Chiron was always imagined as that loading area. As part of our transformation of this project. We've sort of reimagined that the use of Chiron Way to serve not only as that loading area and sort of internal. Sort of, you know, backbone of the campus, but also really more as a pedestrian bicycle way in connection, you know, through the campus for folks. So I think it's really the the PDP that drove a lot of the uses off of, for instance, the Hollis Street frontage. And I think the loading area that we propose is just for the buildings one and two, three. There is a loading area on fifty third street that would serve building eight A and eight B. So it's really just a matter of taking loading off of the passenger loading off of Hollis.
Okay, so you're speaking about passenger loading rather than freight. So you're saying that in the, so PDP lays out expectations for both passengers and for freight as well?
That's my understanding.
Yeah, that's correct. We were limited in terms of curb cuts on Hollis Street to zero, or maybe there was one. I think there was one curb cut allowed by the PDP for an access into a parking. Spaces that were envisioned as a part of building one, but. As I think Ethan, you know, elaborated on, we just didn't feel. Well, that would be allowable or appropriate to be, you know, stopping on Hollis Street to drop off people. So tried to create a location that was, you know. I think more private and protected.
And do you have any expectation about how many trips, you know, in a passenger vehicle might go through Chiron Way for that purpose on a given day?
For the purposes specifically of dropping off passengers or do you mean any passenger vehicle on Chiron?
Well, I'm getting at any passenger vehicle, but I was assuming that hopefully the vast majority of the passenger vehicles going there would be for the purposes of of loading and unloading or dropping off and picking up.
I could, I could do like a clunky equation that would sort of split apart the, you know, the. The employees per building and then sort of, you know, and then say, well, we said one third is are coming either in carpool or a different means and then split up that one third somehow. So I it's hard, I'd say it's hard to say. We can, I can try to get you a number, but I'd say at this point, it's it's hard to predict.
The design intended, Ethan, maybe we can add, you know, the design intent here, and that's what we're going to nudge to with signage, surface materials, et cetera, is. That for the, you know, for the bulk of the day, except for maybe, you know, morning and evening arrival and departure. And that street, you know, we're expecting is. Going to be pedestrian priority. That section of.
Correct. We would design it. Yeah, we would, we would design it and provide signage to discourage people to be using it, especially as a through street.
Yeah, the intent.
Combination.
The intent behind the selection of materials as well as the 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 width of the street and how we're we've configured it is intended to. Discourage vehicles from moving through that street just for the purposes of circulation. It's really just, you you would know that there's a drop off there. you, you would know that there's a drop off there and that's the intent, but it's, it's really designed to be a very slow moving street and to allow for safety of pedestrians and bicycles.
Okay, just final point on this. So if someone was taking, say Lyft or Uber, another, you know, ride sharing vehicle throughout the entire project, if we visualize the whole project, then we could assume that any pickup and drop off was happening on Chiron Way from that form of transportation. Is that right?
No, because we do provide for a loading zone along, also along 53rd that would, that's designed to serve building eight A and eight B. So the vehicle, the passenger loading on Chiron is only meant to take it off of Hollis for building one and two, three.
Okay, very helpful. Thank you. That's it for me for now.
Chair Thompson, if I may offer clarification with your permission. A question was asked regarding when the bicycle infrastructure improvements would be completed. So just to clarify, prior to the issuance of building permit for the parking garage, the plans will be designed. And they, and those plans will get built before a TCO for the parking structure is issued. So before the parking structure is ready, the bicycle infrastructure would also be ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Maru. Thank you, Commissioner Chafe. Is Commissioner Vice Chair Young, would you like, do you have any questions?
Yes. Hi, thank you. Great for the presentation. Questions I have is can kind of go over what your ideas on the bio retention gardens might be? Is that something that people are going to, is that just sitting invisible? Or is it something that someone can kind of respond to, you know, what they would be able to see if they're looking at that at the garden? Does it smell like anything, that kind of stuff?
Absolutely. Yeah, those are intended to be planted. It would, most of the year, it's going to look like a meadow. It'll blend in with the rest of the landscape and appear like a meadow. And then during the rainy times of the season, you would get some seasonal ponding in those gardens. So it would look somewhat like a rain garden. But that's meant to filter through at the standard BMP treatment. So most of the year, it's going to look like just a natural meadow incorporated into the overall landscape, but they are intended to be visible. So people can see them, interact with them. And I think part of the signage plan and intent is to speak to the treatment of water and the overall habitat. So I think that would be called out as an educational opportunity as well.
Absolutely. Which was my next question that you hit in there. That was, that was exactly what I was thinking. And in terms of the building elevations, there was that, there was that change to kind of break up the facades of the building with those dividing up the faces of them with, I used a word in there that I was referring to. Can you give me a little bit more insight on the reason for that? Or what were you kind of hoping in terms of like the symbolism of the face of the building? Or was this to kind of chop, make it physically look like it's smaller? Or did you feel that there was too much glass and you needed to break it up? Was there some kind of? Make a little mention on that, please?
Yeah, very good question, Commissioner Young. I'll address that, I think, with answers to two, two of the buildings themselves. So I mentioned that we built the models to help us, you know, better visualize the projects and to really be able to view it from all angles. You know, as we do these renderings, they tend to be focused on, you know, particular point of view and doesn't really give you necessarily a good sense of how it's going to look from all angles. So one of the things we recognized on building one, as we built that model and looked at it, was that the, the north facade of the building, you know, because the building is oriented east west, the north facade was fairly large and resulted in a, you know, what was maybe I'll call it a blank face to the, to the north and to the views from the rest of Emeryville. So in studying that, we decided to create some additional articulation in that facade by pulling portions of the building back and inserting kind of vertical breaks in the facade, which is actually the same thing that we were doing on the, on the east and south sides and the west side. We just never really looked at it from the north side until we saw it in model form. So we carried the same articulation around all sides of the building.
I think it's high. I think it's highly interesting. The other thing that I was thinking too is that when you do step it back about is this something about two feet or is it about three feet deep? What are these recesses? Or how much, how much distance are we talking about? How much shadow line are we talking about?
They're actually fairly significant. I think the variations in the building facade are more like five to eight feet, maybe.
Oh, wow.
In some instances. So, so it's going to be significant. It's going to be visible. It's not just, you know, a token kind of a setback. It's actually a
Thing, yeah.
A thing.
All right. Thank you very much. Those are my two only big questions I have right now.
Thank you, Vice Chair Young. Commissioner Keller, do you have questions?
I'm good for now. Thank you.
Okay. I think I just had one question was specifically related to the open space and the terraces. And it had to do with the, the fact that the potential for terraces was, was indicated in the staff report. But when we talked about open space and usable open space, the focus in this presentation was very much on the open space around the parking garage. And I know there's a concept for the open space in the campus around the buildings proper. What's, what's the overall intention around usable space, public space versus private space? Can you just clarify that?
I would say that all of the, all of the at grade spaces, all of the plazas that are at grade and the, that connect to the, the streetscape, those will all be open and accessible to the public. So those are not intended to be, any portion of those intended to be private. And so we have looked at spaces in PCR Plaza where there would be some terrace seating associated with a deck space in between buildings eight A and eight B. And in Chiron Plaza, there are, there's a range of different seating options as well as a shade structure that would provide shade day one as the trees grow in around that area. So a number of different seating options associated into that space. But the intent is that all of the parks and plazas are fully accessible to the public and offer that diversity of amenities.
Okay, great. And then, and then in terms of the, the roof, the idea of a roof terrace, and this may be more for the developers, that these are, there may be these elements in the buildings, but they're intended for, for the, the people who occupy the buildings. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we went back and forth, you know, trying to, you know, assess what was the best way to allow, you know, highest and best use. And we ended up at the ground plane, you know, and let's just, you know, put all our attention and enhance the ground plane because that's more likely to be used. Rather than draw people through, you know, what's essentially secure facilities with research and all that going on, draw them up. So we, so that's where we ended up on that, on the upper terraces, for instance, the ones on top of eight A and eight B as offsets, you know, available to if tenants wanted to use them. And the ground plane being the, you know, like when we add up the three acres, that's all on the ground plane, the three acres of public available space.
Great. That was my only question. Thank you. So. So I am going to, because this is a public hearing, I'm going to say now is the time for the public comments, or well, for the public hearing on this item. Make comments related to this item should have begun to middle of your online speaker. Three minutes will be for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature. Or if you're calling in. And the clerk will call on you at the appropriate time. At this time, I wanted to ask Charlie if there are any comments that have been received by online comment cards or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
Sorry, I was. We did, I did receive four online speaker cards earlier today. And those were from Josephine Cheon, Laura, Laura McCammy, Evan Lovett Harris and Judith Timmel. I do not see any of those names in the list of attendees for the meeting. So I'm assuming they're not going to make those comments verbally. I also don't see any raised hands in the list of attendees right now. So I will read these four online speaker cards that I received earlier today. I also want to mention to the commission that you have also received, I believe, nine emails over the course of the last several days regarding the street trees. And you also received two emails from Mr. Bouters. An initial email and then a follow up email, I believe, was this afternoon. So those emails about the trees, Mr. Bouters emails, and these four online speaker cards are the sum total of the public comments that I am aware of. And at this point, I will read the online speaker cards. The first one is from Josephine, Josephine Cheon of 5514 Doyle Street. The building at Stanford Hollis is planned for 10 stories. Speaking on behalf of the co housing community on Doyle Street, we do not wish this to reduce the amount of sunlight we receive on our building as we are currently planning solar installation and for other reasons. I think the parking garage on Horton is too large and will encourage too much new single occupant car traffic in Emeryville. The plan includes a traffic light on Horton at 53rd, replacing the stop sign currently in place. I strongly oppose this because I think it will give cars priority, move them faster on a bike boulevard and make it harder for bikes and pedestrians to cross here. Thank you for your consideration. Next is Laura McCammy. Who says, while there are several positive features to this plan, there are two aspects that I strongly affect the traffic signal at 53rd and Horton. The current condition of this T intersection that connects two bicycle boulevards isn't always stop. The current condition prioritizes pedestrian and bicycle traffic. The only reason to install a traffic signal is to move more cars and move them faster. This is incompatible with this intersection of bike boulevards. A signal will force pedestrians to wait, increase car speeds and make it harder for bikers and walkers to use this intersection. I assume that the purpose of a signal here is to facilitate the movement of cars into the nearby parking garage. People biking and walking would be disadvantaged 24/7 to facilitate cars coming in and out during, during a narrow window of time, five days a week into a garage that is too big to belong on a bike boulevard. There is no light at Stanford and Horton and no reports of issues with cars getting into the parking garage there. This traffic light will turn a lovely low stress section of a bike way into roadblock for bikes and a frustrating spot to walk across the street. Please eliminate the traffic signal from the plan. Parking garage. This project is infrastructure that will have a long lifespan. Whatever the planning commission decides will be baked into the Emeryville landscape for decades. A 1991 car 11 story garage represents a commitment to a future of single occupant car commuting. Emeryville already has too many people driving into the city for work. The future occupants at this project must be helped and encouraged to take transit or commute by bike and scooter rather than investing in a monstrous garage that will have a severe negative impact on a bike boulevard that Emeryville has worked hard to create and preserve. The developer should invest in improved transit options such as Mego Run service onsite bike and scooter share stations and perhaps car sharing spots. Please downsize the garage by at least 50% and if possible, move it to a different location where it won't impact the bicycle boulevard. The next.
Excuse me, Charlie. I just want to make sure that Commissioner Keller is still there. I'm counting the commissioners. I want to make sure we still have our quorum. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was not looking at the screen. Is he there? Yes?
Yes, he's there.
Okay. The next comment is from Evan Lovett Harris. The BMR project has a lot of things going for it, which will be a benefit to the community for years to come, opening up Chiron Way, Horton Park, et cetera. That said, developing a parking garage with nearly 2,000 spaces is not aligned with the active and public transportation goals of this city. It is crucial that project, the project incorporate impact mitigation measures. More specifically, a garage of this size is going to have substantially negative impacts on this, on the experience and reality of walking, biking and taking public transit in this city without mitigating the effects. Conditions in the city have changed substantially since this PDP was initially approved. I strongly urge the planning commission members to add a condition of approval to this project to require substantial investment in bike, pedestrian, public transit infrastructure impacted by these additional car trips. The Powell Christie corridor and Hollis between 40th and Powell are examples of these areas. Examples of investments could include the funding of a bus only lane on Hollis Street, raised protected bike lanes on Hollis Street, raised crosswalks on Hollis, reconfiguring the Powell Christie corridor to be safer for pedestrians, et cetera. Thanks for your time. And then the final comment, online speaker card is from Judith Timmel. She says, I am concerned about maintaining the integrity of bicycle boulevard on Horton Street. First of all, the size of the parking lot, which will be a large increase in the traffic on that street. Secondly, installing a traffic light will increase the speed of the car traffic on Horton. Please address these issues in your meeting. Thank you, Judith Timmel. And that concludes the online speaker cards that I have.
Okay, and you don't have any additional raised hands at this time?
Take a quick check. There are 24 attendees and none of them have their hands raised. And looking at my email, I have not received any new online speaker card. So the answer is I see no one else who wishes to speak.
Okay. Well, hearing no additional requests to make comments, the public hearing portion of this item is now closed. I'd like to bring it back to the commission for deliberation. So on that tack, let me start with Commissioner Keller.
You sure you want to do that? I guess I have a quick question about the traffic light. I know that came up in the last study session. And I don't recall if we were told it was a city staff recommendation or what, what was the introduction of that traffic light at 53rd and Horton? Why are we removing the, the stop sign and putting out light?
I believe that was a proposal by the applicant.
Okay, and the bike committee, the bike pad committees thought on that was not to happen as well?
Do you, Mira, do you have any information on that? You're on mute, Mira.
Yeah, yes, the BPAC also had a, raised a question regarding the need for 15 traffic lock on Horton and 59th, 52nd.
So Kevin, since it seems to be a thing that the developer wants, consult with the developer, tell us why they feel that's necessary?
Am I allowed to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so we, we did state, it was us who brought it up. It was proposed to us by our traffic engineer, Kim Lee Horn. And then we presented it to various committees. We presented it from the perspective, again, of vehicle, pedestrian, bicycle conflict. And so we are also proposing it as a pedestrian scramble signal, which does, which does provide significant time for pedestrians only to cross in both directions rather than, you know, it being a barrier for pedestrians who have to wait for vehicles. And so, again, as we presented it before, you know, we did hear the feedback and, and we concurred with the city that we would wait for fair and peers to the city's third party traffic consultant to review the appropriateness of it based on our, you know, based on the plan. And I do believe they concurred with the appropriateness of it. Again, not just from the perspectives of bicycles, but from the perspective of a safe environment to avoid conflict between all three groups. And so, understanding the bicyclist's objection to it, as expressed in certain forums, we felt like, you know, from a pedestrian, also a reduced conflict perspective, it did. It did make sense to carry it forth. And we were supported by Fair and Pierce and Kim Lee Horn.
So a question I have with maybe Charlie or Andrea is, is this something we can approve the project, but yet revisit the, the need for the signal? Or if we approve this project tonight, are we stuck with the signal?
Chair Thompson, with your permission, I will call on the Public Works Director who may be able to answer these questions. I will call on the Public Works Director who may be able to answer these questions, some of these questions?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair Thompson and Planning Commission. My name is Mary Grace Houlihan, and I'm your Public Works Director. I will say that the signal is something that we can definitely revisit with the recent changes, with the proposed condition to limit traffic on Horton between Stanford and the loading zone area that kind of changes things a touch. I recommend that we review that and assess it and identify if it's truly needed any longer during the detailed design. And our efforts would be to try and eliminate it.
That's great. I appreciate it. And what I would suggest, too, is that we have a city meeting involving that might, that we involve a subcommittee, maybe of the planning commission, the bike head committee, city staff, and the developer, and really try to suss out if we really do need this and if it's something that we can eliminate. Because I don't, I see, you know, the safety for pedestrians, but I think a stop sign provides that same thing. And I just think that it does provide an opportunity for cars to just get the go and to go probably faster than they need to be. So I'd really like to revisit that, but I certainly don't want to make an issue of that in working on the approval of this process tonight. So with that said, I'd like to thank the team for their continued work on developing this plan and all the work involved. I think it's slightly unfortunate that the public was not attending the two study sessions we did. The parking garage was a major sticking point for us, and we did get it down from 2,400 parking spaces to 19. They are going to do an aggressive TDM. We're going to require that. And they're going to do a lot of alternate transit sources. But that conversation has been had twice before, and so I don't want to work on it tonight. But I do want the public that brought that up tonight to know it was heavily discussed, and this is where it landed. So I'd like to just thank the group for refining the parking garage as they did and for refining Building 23. I think the work that you did on that was phenomenal. That building was always the weakest link in the project. So I think Building 23 now is probably my favorite. So thank you for doing that. So I want to get on to more of the public comments and stuff. And I want to just express that I truly appreciate the concern for the loss of the mature trees. And I know how important protecting trees is. At work, there's this magnificent pine tree that sits out front of my office. It's probably 30 feet. And as recently as a month ago, they're talking again about removing that tree to provide more parking. And again, I had to remind them that removing a tree for parking is not the direction that the University of California wants to go. I believe the modifications offered by BMR lessens the impacts of their original plan. It is something we should support for the following reasons. Many of the trees throughout our city were planted long before the discovery of engineered soils and the benefit that give trees a greater chance of growing healthy and to their full potential without cracking or lifting the sidewalks surrounding them. In addition, many of the trees in our fair city were planted in toxic soil and the planting boxes that constrain them and limit their trees' growth abilities. In addition, many of the trees along the west side of Horton have cracked and lifted the sidewalks, which in of themselves is very narrow and do not come close to our current design standards. The current design guidelines call for eight-feet-clear walking paths, and that would be very difficult to achieve where the current trees exist on the west side of Horton. I realize that any tree removal is a loss, but because the project is not going to build over several years in long phases, such as an example as the public market has been, overall, we're going to see a net gray and net gain of green. We're going to have more trees than we started with, and these trees will be in better soil, which will help them grow faster, healthier, and bigger. And this isn't just me talking out of my hat. We have actual examples of the success of correctly planted trees. All along the western Interpark Avenue, some of the largest and healthier trees in our city are found in that area. And though they're less than three years old, the trees in Christie Park are healthy and thriving. The oaks are really taking off. And the project areas that we're talking about, within three to five years, will have trees nearly as big as what we have now, and they'll be healthier and able to grow much larger. But in addition, we'll get much improved public realm with better sidewalks, open streets, an enlarged entry to Horton Landing Park, and with hopefully a parkside cafe, which would be a great amenity. We'll have more public open space and plazas with access to entire campus at ground level unlike what we have at this location today. And very unlikely how we are experiencing the things like the Pixar campus. Currently, there is one physically accessible space at this location, has a beautiful fountain, but there's nowhere to sit and enjoy it. Additionally, I think increased public space will help activate the park along Hollis Street. Yet there is an equal factor we must consider that while we're attempting to save some trees, we're at risk of delaying or postponing this important project. If we do postpone the project, how long will we be stuck with these two huge parking lots? Big, black parking lots that create heat island effects. And this isn't just in theory, we're experiencing that situation at the public market. Due to public delays, due to project delays, we have totally and completely lost our chance for a local serving grocery store. Further delays have now left us with a dirt lot and another surface parking lot. And this is an issue, and this issue because of the public market and thus our neighborhood. The issues at the public market and the public in general depend on all phases of this project being complete. Without it, we will not have a bridge connection with bike troughs on both sides. We will not get the street-level activation that the rest of the marketplace relies on, and will continue to have incomplete neighborhood. Causing a project like this to solve, having a project like this stall has significant and negative impacts that I feel are far worse than the community and the environment than the removal of a few trees, especially when overall we'll see a net grain in healthier trees, more public open space, larger parks, and the removal of two heat island parking lots. So to conclude, I want to acknowledge all the comments received. It shows us that we have an engaged and caring community. And I believe that the revised plan by BMR tonight addresses most of those concerns. I will remind my fellow commissioners that the one document we must follow is the City Design Standards and Guidelines, which clearly states we need to improve and enlarge our sidewalks within new developments. In support of that, our own Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has advocated over and over again that we need to do a better job creating better sidewalks. This project is a win all around and deserves our support. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. Commissioner Chee?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. So yeah, I want to start by, again, recognizing all of the work that the project team has done. I think that the overarching goals of eliminating the super block, eliminating fences, pedestrian movement, and being bicycle-friendly, especially the open space improvements, are really wonderful. And I hear that you have heard our feedback and incorporated it. I think, you know, for me, one thing that's been a bit difficult over the past week is trying to process all of the information about transportation and transportation demand management that I felt like I was seeing for the first time. And it's, in my mind, pretty integral to making a finding about whether the conditions of approval related to the PDP have been incorporated into the FDP. So it's something that I'm still grappling with. Let's see, other comments I had. So thank you for putting the bird-safe glass considerations in. And I like the modifications of the buildings along Hollis that were shown tonight. Going back to transportation, so on the traffic light issue, I think we've heard from several different constituents and committees that there is not much desire for that. So I do hope that that can be eliminated in a future meeting. That would be my preference as well. I was very glad to hear about the timeline for the improvements of the bicycle infrastructure. So my understanding is that those improvements will be put into place before the conditional certificate of occupancy is issued for the parking garage. Someone, please correct me if I'm wrong about that. I think that that makes good sense. And I hope that the project design team will continue to work with the BPAC as needed in the final design phases for that as necessary. I have one big comment about the sort of the conditions around the project. And there's some text that, which I'm trying to find right now. It's in my notes somewhere. You know, basically saying that we need to take into account whether any conditions have changed since the PDP was approved in 1995, and especially around climate change and greenhouse gases. I saw a note in some of the supporting documentation that, you know, that there was awareness around greenhouse gases in 1995, and therefore, that's not new information. I would like to push back strongly on that. You know, the state of California has put into place some very ambitious but doable timelines and targets for meeting sustainability criteria and reducing emissions. And I know that this project has those goals baked into it. But when we think about the transportation plans for this project, I mean, the entire state of California is trying to reach a target of 40% below 1990 levels by 2030. And when it comes down to it, that type of action needs to happen at the city level. Like, we are the ones who can actually make a difference on that. And I guess, from what I'm hearing and reading, I'm not 100% convinced that everyone is doing as much as possible to do our part in Emeryville with this project to make that happen. If I can just read out a few things from the Climate Action Plan 2.0 from Emeryville. So, you know, one of the goals is to reduce the total vehicle miles traveled on local roads by 30%. Another one is to increase local renewable energy capacity in Emeryville by 30%. We heard that there will be some exploration of that, but I don't believe that it's actually in the conditions of approval right now. It's not sort of memorialized in any way. Another one is to promote programs that reduce vehicle miles traveled during new development planning. So examples would be employee alternative commute plans and community-based social marketing plans, expanding Amigo Round hours and coordinating service to match hours of regional transportation services. So again, this is a city plan, but because this project is so central to Emeryville, literally in terms of location and also in terms of the trajectory for development in the city going forward, I would really encourage the project applicants to take this to heart because the actions that they take will reflect not only on sort of the trajectory of our work on greenhouse gas emission reduction, but also on what it's like to experience that part of Emeryville as well. Other than that, I appreciate the new work on the trees. I'm willing to support the conditions of approval that were sent out very recently before the meeting. And I think I'm going to leave it right there. I might have one or two other things. Oh, yes, sorry, I do hope. So we talked a little bit about LEED certification. I think it's great that the project proponents are willing to go for LEED Silver. Again, you know, taking into account the comments I just made, I would really, really appreciate it if we could aim a little bit higher than that just because of the lifespan of these buildings that is basically going to be baked into place. The opportunity to influence emissions happens at the time of construction. And then it will happen, you know, those emissions will continue to accrue as the buildings are used over the next 10 to 20 to 30 years. And so I think this is really the time to push ourselves to try and see if we can go for LEED Platinum. And I know that there are, there are definitely restrictions around R&amp;D uses, but I think there are some examples out there, and I would very, very strongly encourage the folks on the development team to take that into account. So I'll stop there. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Chee. Vice Chair Young?
Hey, I want to thank everybody for the presentation tonight. I feel honored to be among my esteemed colleagues here and then people like yourselves who make very complex presentations like this. This building is difficult. I can see the amount of work that must have just gone into it. And I'm actually believing that this is a complete world-class level project. I'm impressed with the hands that staff has for actually presenting a building like this, and it's impressive. I do feel that I kind of join, you know, John McColl's feeling of having the architectural model unavailable because we're all doing this by this, 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 video meetings that we're having here. But I just want to say that I like the staff's original recommendation on just being able to handle the building. I think we could try them to make the right decisions on what the building will actually look like as far as the trees. But if it's something that's a big issue, I know they're willing to take the smartest and the straightest lines between the two. I think the whole project itself is creative. It's brilliant. There's a place on the use of materials, the way the building's kind of laid out. I think the fact that it has a sense for its legacy on Building 4, where this new project does complement it and make it, it still keeps this building, keeps that building as a center point in terms of what, you know, what kind of feeling of architectural layout that this particular city kind of needs. The Greenway, the connection between the Greenway and the connection between the bridge and that whole park play, I think it's fabulous. And I think it's, I think Mr. Keller brought a couple really fantastic points that I just want to kind of really kind of emphasize. I mean, we have a city where it's kind of divided. I mean, we've got a city that we're kind of divided from the Marina. We're kind of divided from, you know, Bay Street. There's just all these barriers in the way, and we're trying to find ways to kind of lock all this stuff together. I think it's, I think it's one of the neatest things and you kind of create a project where you do have a green, where you can connect places together. And I think this is a kind of a win-win situation for everybody here. I think it's also super wonderful that we have this enhanced Horton Plaza program and these added pocket parks. I think those are, those are great. I think they take a large, what would look like, you know, this is a large project that looks like a freeway and cutting it up with these ability that brings up human scale. And that feeling of slowing down this fast architecture is really nice. And I think it's, I think it's something that we should never really take lightly because a lot of buildings do have that sense of just like, hey, let's just, let's just come up with some kind of speedy result for something like this. And then to be able to carry a project like this off with the strengths of science and technology, I think is really nice. I think the building also could look kind of neat from long distances. This is a big issue of mine, like, you know, what does it look like from the street? But, you know, what does it look like from across town? I mean, what is it, what is it read? And I think this building will look really, you know, as a, as a, kind of in terms of horizon or some kind of visible horizon that runs across. And I think the shapes can look kind of neat. I have to say that the landscape choices and the way the trees and the parks and all that are wonderful. I love to see a project like this come together. I'm being someone who loves greenways and parks and all that stuff. I think this would be a really thing. I think it'll be vibrant. I think this connected tissue is true. I think it's realistic. I think it's not, it's not something that is just a bunch of words and pretty pictures and perspectives, but I think this project really will read the way we want it to. I want to also talk about these 22 trees that have been lost. I agree with Mr. Keller's point of view where, you know, that's a trade-off. We're going to lose some trees, but we'll gain something a lot more. And maybe these designers and their artists, they're sensitive to that. They're sensitive to understanding what, you know, their process of making this a really neat place. I wish I could visit the other projects that they have in Seattle and all these other places that I'd love to see what they've done up there. But I saw some photos, and I think they're in the right track. So that's my thought. And thank you very much for your real hard work, guys.
Thank you, Vice Chair Young. Charlie, a couple of questions of clarification. I just wanted to ask very specifically about the mechanism for the discussion of the future traffic light or the traffic light, the ability to eliminate it. Can you talk a little bit about sort of how you see that taking place?
Well-
Just that deliberation?
As a matter of fact, we have just, in the background here, been crafting some language for a possible condition of approval about that. As a matter of fact, we have just in the background here been crafting some language for a possible condition of approval about that. If you would like to see that.
Sure.
Okay, let me. Let's see, let me let me share my screen. I've got to find the document first. It is, okay. Okay, here we go. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, so we there's a condition buried down in there somewhere. In the whole big section about public improvement. And under H, it says, there's a condition about the design of the traffic signals. And that includes the hawk signal that's proposed on Horton Street as well as the signal at Fifty-third and Horton. The condition currently says, design of the traffic signal at the intersection of Fifty-third Street and Horton Street with directional curb ramps, lighting and bicycle detection. And a fiber signal interconnect to the traffic signal at the intersection of Fifty-third Street and Hollis Street. That is what would be required. So we would suggest adding that, given that condition of approval XXX, I don't recall all the number right now. But it's one of the additional ones that Miro sent you earlier today. Will eliminate through traffic on Horton Street between Fifty-third Street and Stanford Avenue. The traffic signal at Fifty-third and Horton Street may no longer be necessary. In the design of the public improvements, the Public Works Director will determine whether the signal is needed with the intent of eliminating it if possible. Would that work for you?
Yeah, that's great clarity in terms of how how that gets integrated in terms of it's in the conditions. And then and then it's the Public Works Director's discretion, and there's a method to do that.
Right.
Great. On the other point of clarification about the tree removal, we are we are considering nine trees removed. And then replacement dollars for those nine trees. That that's what's on the on the table right now.
That's the revised resolution that we sent to you this afternoon. Yes.
Okay, okay, great. So, yeah, no, so I wanted to just add my comments about this project. I did want to thank the applicant for for a comprehensive presentation today that was focused on the changes. So thank you for that. Yeah, the 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 study sessions absolutely revealed the the topic of conversation in the beginning was the parking garage. And so very specifically, making changes to the form of that. Not only in terms of making it thinner and moving it away from residential, but also thinking about the the open space at the ground floor. As well as the cladding and the and the quality of that building. So I think that in terms of being responsive to the concerns around the the parking, trying to keep it as reduced as possible. Those elements have been have been upheld and sort of developed throughout the course of the project. In terms of also just the trees and and the comments around trees. I was very happy to see the applicant take this, the convert, the comments about mature trees and to develop a response to that. Because I think that was one thing that was missing in the original approach. And so it was very nice to see a real consideration of what is, what can be preserved. Because it does take time for the trees to grow up and to have a mix of mature trees while while other new trees, which may have better planting characteristics. Or better species characteristics planted. I think that that's actually a great improvement. Also, I did ask about the total amount, and so I'm I'm glad to see that the total amount is increasing. And to Commissioner Keller's point about a better sidewalk, I do think that that is that is extraordinarily valuable. And there's other work in terms of improving that that sidewalk further down the street associated with Sherwin-Williams. So I'm looking forward to a real, a real better connection throughout the length of that street. I do also support the the clarity around the bike additions. I think it's been a concern of the of the commission throughout this process to make sure that the the biking infrastructure is as good as. Other infrastructure, so that it is really quite natural to ride your bike around and to to circulate throughout the city of Emeryville. But also to potentially go to your work in this method. So I think that the the certain little, a little more certainty around that infrastructure is is really helping the project. I did want to just note that the architectural development is great to see. I think there I I'm very satisfied with how things have come along and improved over the course of the discussions. And I do like the emphasis on the ground plane as a real contributor to to the urban quality of the city of Emeryville. The sustainability elements, I think I also echo Commissioner Chaffee's interest, concerns, priority placed on sustainability. We we are up against very serious greenhouse gas emission thresholds. This project will be around through twenty thirty. We hope it'll be around much longer. But these are real thresholds that the city is looking looking at and really trying to figure out how to how to eliminate greenhouse gas emissions, both in transportation and in buildings. So I appreciate the commitment to lead so that you're actually understanding the functionality and the performance of your building. So that's great. I I too would say, you know, try as go further, you know, go as far as you can. Because we really need to, we need to address this, and and we're going to be addressing this through through both buildings and transportation. So those were were really just the comments that I had in terms of the progress of this project. And so I don't know if any other comments have come up with the commissioners who are here. Charlie, go ahead.
Whoa. Did you hear a big echo there? I don't know. I don't know what that was about. Sorry. I would like to say that it sounds to me like there is a consensus of the commissioners to support the new tree plan. That Biomed has presented to you tonight. And so Miro has some additional suggested conditions of approval that relate to that, if you would like to see those.
Be great.
Okay, I will share my screen. Not quite, excuse me.
By the time COVID is over, we'll all have the hang of how to use Zoom. Maybe.
Maybe, maybe.
Might even miss it.
Then we'll be doing this live, so.
So, yeah, so the underlying one would be the new condition, which will. Which memorializes the plan that was shown to the commission. And it also says that all the trees along Hollis Street shall be designated as street trees under the city's UFO. Even if they are not located, even if they are located on private property. In addition to that, there's one more. Oops, sorry. And this is again, just memorializing the new tree removal and preservation plan. So these are the two new conditions of approval that we would recommend if the commission is so inclined to approve the new preservation plan. That the applicant submitted, presented today.
Right, thank you, Miro.
Do we want to ask the project team what they feel of those? Or they just kind of find in already because they've already agreed to that?
You might want to ask for their confirmation that they're okay with those new conditions.
We've reviewed. We're we're comfortable with them. Thank you for asking.
Yeah, good.
Excellent. So, so I think the question is, is there a motion to move forward? Well, I want to make sure that the mechanism is right, Andrea.
I just want to sort of summarize. There's the res- the resolution with the conditions of approval in your packet, and there's been some suggested changes made. And so we have changes to, let me see her, sorry, I just had it up.
And there are two resolutions before you. There's the FTP resolution and the tree removal resolution. Most of the changes are to the conditions of approval that are part of the FTP resolution.
Correct, so we have a change to condition of approval two D five. Condition of approval for A one G. And then we also have condition of approval three A fourteen, which is what Miro just showed with the trees. And then the last one would be the traffic light condition of approval that has been developed on the fly. And then we also have a revised. Tree removal permit resolution that went from the waiver of the replacement fee to requiring payment of the replace, the replacement fee. So I just want to, did I miss anything, Charlie?
I I think the the tree. Conditions that Miro just presented, there's also condition number one A.
Oh, that's right.
It's the very first condition of approval that approves the the plan that. And it adds the tree, the new tree plant to the plan set.
So that's a total of one, two, three, four, five, six conditions and a revised resolution, correct?
I I have, I don't have five, I don't have six, I have five. Can you read the numbers again?
I got one A, one B, two D five, four A one G, three A fourteen, and then the traffic light condition of approval on the fly.
Okay, I didn't have one B before.
Okay.
Sounds right. That sounds correct to me, unless the commission wants to modify or add anything.
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to propose another idea, which is to eliminate the loading for passengers on Chiron Way.
So. What? What does the PUD say about loading and unloading?
I don't know that the PUD invites loading on Chiron Way because the that's a gated street. But I'm not sure where the loading would occur. I think for building one A, building B one and B two, three. The applicant team is trying to avoid loading off of Hollis Street. And loading off of Stanford or Fifty-third is a little bit remote from one or the other of those buildings. So Chiron Way seemed like the most logical place for auto, for for passenger drop-off to occur. So I don't know what the alternative would be.
Well, and if I could just make a comment to for Commissioner Chee is that, you know, I I see where you're going with this. I like the idea because it's nice to have fewer cars and more pedestrian access on there. As long as that road is accessible to cars, whether we allow a space there or not. Left and Uber are going to use it. And if we don't allow a curb cut for them to pull into, they're going to double park, and they're going to be right in the bike lane. And if you, I mean, Christie Avenue these days is even though we don't have a lot more traffic because these buildings between the deliveries and the Ubers and Lifts. The street is constantly double parked, and I mean constantly. So just because we don't allow for something doesn't mean these people aren't going to do it. So I think for me, I'm more inclined to allow the developer to put in a place for these people to park. Rather than just let it be, you know, helter-skelter and catch a sketch canon, we just have cars to park all over the street.
That's, that makes sense, Commissioner Keller. I guess my thought is, could we discourage any passenger car from using Chiron Way if we eliminated the need for loading there?
Is is that what the handicap parking was to? Did we have to add some parking in that area for handicap? I thought that's what we moved some stalls.
Yes, we will have some handicap parking at the. Location that's currently adjacent to Building F and Building Seven.
Just to clarify, that's handicap parking and short-term visitor parking, so that'd be, but it's a very small little lot.
Yeah, yes, I don't think we can close it off to vehicles at all, or totally. And while.
I know that. Well, I know that there is language that that we've worked with with Mary Grace to design, for instance, like the curb cuts and create signage. And to do everything we can to prevent the people do use it as a cut-through. And also with the with the new measure, which prevents a right turn on Chiron. It also just allows, disallows people from using it as a shortcut to get to, you know, bypass Hollis to get to the garage. So I know that there are a number of measures that I'm sure we'll continue to work with. Public Works of the garage, as the designs develop to to continue to discourage people who don't actually have to be there with their cars to go there.
And this is the only question I would ask the Charlie, maybe. Is there, is there value to language as a condition? Or are we feeling as though it would be the the conditions that we've altered, which is this six, is sufficient?
You're on mute, Charlie.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that. There is a condition already regarding the design of Chiron Way. And with the intent that it not be. Used for extensively for vehicular traffic, that it's primarily for deliveries. And, you know, loading and unloading of passengers. Miro, do you, can you find that condition?
Yeah, I'm looking.
I I was just, I was looking for it, which is why I didn't realize I was muted, because I didn't have you on my screen at the moment.
Hey, Charlie, are you able to let Cecily into the two as a participant?
Sure.
Thank you.
If that's, if that's the chair, so does I, oh, her hand is up, yes. Trying to do too many things here. Oh, there's more. Okay, there we go. All right. She should join us. There she is.
Can you?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. While you are looking for the condition, I wanted to point out that in our project description, which is part of the application that you're approving. There is a sentence on approximately page fifteen under pedestrian facilities where we have committed that Chiron Way will be developed. As a primarily pedestrian plaza and pathway that can also accommodate fire truck and service traffic. And employee or visitor drop-off and pickup. It is designed as a narrow street that will discourage thorough trap through traffic. Pedestrian pathways also will crisscross the landscape courtyard area. And the breaks between buildings will provide inviting mid-block access routes. So in addition to whatever's in the condition and how we all work together, we are, as a campus design, committed. And the document, the project description you're proving, just would help with that. So I just wanted to share that information.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cecil is our land use attorney. I don't know.
Sorry about that. Cecily Barclay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Commissioner Chee, I mean, is the intent of your your question, is it really related to Lyft and Uber?
Yeah, and I think also maybe taking away some of the ambiguity, if, you know, if there was a bit more of. If we had this this definite condition where Lyft and Uber were not expected to be seen on that block on that way. Then I think it would be a lot more clear if a car was there, it was out of place. Whereas I think there's a bit more potential for it to be misused if there is some use case for it. And so, you know what I mean, like, if you see a car, you don't know if they're Uber, Uber left, or if they're dropping somebody off or picking somebody else, or if they're just going through. And I completely appreciate the the design aspects that are being taken into account. To dissuade people or discourage people from using it as a thoroughfare. I just think there's so much potential for it as a truly pedestrian-oriented area. And, you know, I think if deliveries need to be made there, that's great, that's fine, there's space for them. Hopefully it wouldn't be happening every minute of the day. I think it's a little bit different when you start to introduce a place for rideshare, especially because it's so popular. And, and because, I mean, this could be a longer conversation. We are located close to transit stops, but not immediately next to them, and there will definitely be people who need to use Uber and Lyft. My feeling is that there are other places on the campus where Uber and Lyft could be accommodated. And so if we could just have that clean break of no passenger cars expected on Chiron Way, I think it would increase the value of that open space tremendously. That's my personal opinion.
Okay.
I found the condition that I can read.
Great.
So prior to the issuance of the first TCO for research and development building, the applicant shall remove the gates currently obstructing Chiron Way between 53rd Street and Stanford Avenue. No gates or other feature that would obstruct access by vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians shall be installed by the applicant or its tenants on Chiron Way. Prior to the issuance of the first TCO for research and development building, the applicant shall develop and submit a plan that shows via signage and other means a way to discourage through vehicular traffic and limit vehicular access of Chiron Way to emergency vehicles, drop-offs, pickups, and delivery vehicles to the Public Works and Community Development Directors for approval. This plan shall be implemented prior to the issuance of the first TCO for research and development building. So if you have to develop a plan, that's going to be subject to staff approval.
And that's the condition that we added, the provision about prohibiting the right turns onto 53rd from Chiron Way.
Left turn, left turn, yeah.
Prohibiting right turns.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think the Public Works Director might have had something to add.
I think things have probably been pretty well covered, but staff did have a number of conversations with the development team about measures that will be implemented to really discourage anyone wanting to use this Chiron Way as a thoroughfare. And there's, there's lots of design tricks we can do to make it so that it's not a, an easy pass-through by any means. So people coming there, it's going to be for that destination spot for those specific purposes, and really limited.
Okay, so, so it's, it sounds as though the, the, what is in there today, the, the planning mechanism of developing a plan and the coordination with Public Works provides some level of clarity on that. Commissioner Chafee, are you satisfied with that level of clarity?
Yeah, I think, I think we've talked it through, and it sounds like there are a number of barriers to actually fully closing it off. So I'm satisfied with the conversation, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So at this time, I'd like to find out if anyone would like to have a motion.
So are we going to do both resolutions at the same time, or one at a time? What does staff?
Oh, yeah, good question.
Just suggest you do them one at a time. Probably the FTP first.
It must be the FTP first.
It must be at first.
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve the first resolution for the FTP with all of the new conditions of approval discussed tonight.
I will second that.
Good. And the motion was by Commissioner Keller, the second was by Chair Thompson? Is that right? All right, on the motion, Commissioner Chafee?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendez is recused, Vice Chair Young?
Aye.
And Chair Thompson?
Aye.
For ayes, that resolution is approved. And now we need to do one for the tree removal permit.
And there is a revised one that has been presented to the commission.
Right, right.
So I move approval of that revised resolution?
I could second that. All right, on that motion was by Commissioner Keller, seconded by Vice Chair Young. Commissioner Chafee?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendez is recused, Vice Chair Young?
Aye.
And Chair Thompson?
Aye.
That resolution is approved for zero. So both of these resolutions are appealable to the city council within 15 days.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Wow.
Good work, everyone. That was a long.
Oh, my gosh.
I think it's going to be a great project, I think we all did a good job.
Yeah, it's going to be really nice. It's, people are going to love it. People are going to really love this building, and just how much they're going to really dig being here. It's going to be really, really neat, thank you.
Great.
Definitely appreciate all the, the, the input and the process along the way. You know, speaking on behalf of Biomed and on, on behalf of our team here, you know, we'll, we will hold up our end of the bargain. You know, what we, what, this entire thing was us dashing to the starting line. You know, we've got an, our goal, we've got to go and execute on this, which we will. Thanks again, definitely appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, staff, and thank you to the applicant, and thank you to the commissioners. Have a good night, everyone.
And as soon as the Biomed folks have departed, I am going to text Commissioner Mendez and tell her she can come back.
Right, so we are waiting for her, but we have Commissioner Comments as the final agenda item.
Right. Um, wow, what a, what a, what a great night. Thank you, guys, that was really, really nice.
There she is.
Hey.
Welcome back.
Did I miss that? No, nothing at all.
No, not much at all.
Just a little bit.
You've just been sitting there committing and asking how they're doing.
So, so welcome back. And our final, final point of order is Commissioner Comments, where we have comments that do not relate to the agenda items. So are there any Commissioner Comments of a general nature?
I have none.
I have one, I have a question, maybe for Charlie or... So I've been noticing that when I, I'm out on walks, we have, there's some of the, the planters, or the, I think they're retaining planters, where the core ten trim around the curb is either broken off or completely coming off. How do we go by informing the city about these, these planters so that they can maybe be fixed? I just see them being a hazard for, for pedestrians and people walking around the city. Just want to make sure that they're aware of it.
Since we have our Public Works Director with us, perhaps she can suggest what the best way is to note that. I know we have C Click Fix, so you can use that to report it.
Yeah, C Click Fix is a, is a great tool for us. If you can give us the location, you can even upload a picture. Many of those, if you're talking the bio swells or those kinds of planters, many of them are maintained by the, the development that constructs them. But if we have the information, we will make sure we're getting ahold of them to make sure it's administered and repaired.
Okay, great. And that was it for me.
Okay, fantastic. Any other, any other comments? Otherwise, I will have us adjourned at 4:49.
9:49.
Sorry, 9:49, 24, 9:49.
I didn't always come for that long.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh. That's funny. All right. See you next month, guys. Good work, good work, everybody, wow.